Okay, and I will try to, there we go, right? That's better. Speaking to the mic, welcome, everybody. This is so, so very exciting. We have some official technical business to do, but I really, I want to welcome everyone. We are reconvening into open session from our closed session that began at 5:00. And if I could turn to our city attorney to ask if there was any announcement from that closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. As announced by the city, by the mayor, the city council entered closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss an item identified on the agenda. There was no reportable action taken. This time, it would be appropriate to adjourn that meeting.
And so that meeting is adjourned. Okay, so now I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02-ish on March 18th. Again, wonderful to see you all. And we are excited to have a student from Miracosta, Aviva Fleckner. Aviva. If you could come down. Let's test this, is this working? Yes. So if you could, you know, lead this crowd, if we could all rise. This is really trippy for me because I've known her since she was about four years old, so I'm wondering who I'm staring at right now, why she's so tall. But here you go, Aviva, the mic's yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know your principal is going to come and say a few words, but I was wondering if there's anybody here in the audience that you'd like to recognize?
I would like to recognize my mom, Farinae Scoshanyi Fleckner, and my dad, Lawrence Fleckner.
Was there a problem? I don't know, okay. All right, and now if the president, the principal of our high school, Ms. Nguyen, could come up and...
Tell us why.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Proud principal at Miracosta, Jennifer Nguyen. And we had an opportunity to nominate one student for the school year that we felt would represent Miracosta. And without a doubt, it was Aviva. I've grown a great relationship with Aviva this year. She was one of the first students to welcome me at the high school. She's a strong advocate for inclusion and diversity on the campus. And she does it because that's truly what she cares about. She's never done it just to check off a box or build up her resume. This is truly something that's within her blood. And I think that all students should strive to be just like Aviva because she has certainly left a lasting impression on me and staff members at the school.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna move this over a little bit. If, do we, we do a photo here, right? All right. So if you could come in, I'm gonna present you with a certificate from the Manhattan Beach City Council. I think it helps on resumes. And a city pin. And if we could get, oh, we got mom and dad coming in, and dad, no matter what she said, and dad. And we're gonna come in and do, scoot this way, I think, right? Scoot this way. No gaps. All right. And now if we could have a roll call? Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Holwerd?
Here. Okay. So we are gonna move on to ceremonial tonight. We have three ceremonial items. And I just want to, for those of you who don't attend every meeting, just to let you know a couple things. One, you certainly don't need to stay after the ceremonial items. You're welcome to. But I know sometimes people are like, oh, can we stay? I mean, can we leave? Would that be rude? No, you can. I would encourage you to stay for each other's ceremonial, though, because that's kind of nice, right? So we're, it's exciting, especially tonight. I'm really, really excited to see so many here tonight. Okay, the first one, though, I'm gonna ask our city manager to do, to present a commendation to our outgoing interim finance director, Onyx Jones.
Thank you. Onyx, are you here? Careful, step down, please.
Why don't you come up, Tolly, with the microphone as well? Why don't you all come up here? That's what we gotta do. Come on. Hi, Onyx.
Sorry. On behalf of the entire city, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank interim finance director, Onyx Jones. She's been with us for eight months, and she's just done some phenomenal work in our finance department, not only with her financial expertise, but also through her leadership, her mentorship, and her coaching of the team. She truly has left some long-lasting effects on the department, and we thank her for that. Additionally, she has contributed to enhancing our transparency and helping us modernize the department. And we thank you, and we're very grateful for your efforts. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our financial services manager, Libby Brett Hauer, who has graciously offered to step in after Onyx's leave. So thank you, Libby, for that. And again, thank you. We will never forget you. Thank you for everything you did for us over the last eight months.
So Onyx, truly on behalf of all of the council, we present this commendation to you. And we were so lucky to have someone like you be able to do this for a while. And for those who don't know, once you're a retiree in the purse system, you cannot work past a certain amount of time. So we are forced to say goodbye. And, but we really do thank you for what you've done. So please accept this. And guess what? A city pin! All right, don't move those chairs. Okay. Yeah, stay standing. Don't move the chairs. Get comfortable. We're gonna move to the bright green portion of the ceremonial. I want to first thank long-term resident native, Louis Pasteur, who's also been someone who's set in with the Hyperion Outfall. The Hyperion, I call it the Hyperion Outfall. That's not really fair, right? It's the Hyperion Outfall Serenaders. And tonight, I've been informed by Lincoln White that tonight is actually the actual date of the 50th, the 50th anniversary, right here, right tonight, of the existence of the Hyperion Outfall Serenaders. And Lincoln's dad, Bob White, and your, the, I've got your names to the sisters, sorry. Katie Newsome and Ann White. And family friend, Livali Patterson. Livali, okay, sorry. I'm gonna call you all up here in a minute. It was Bob's 96th birthday yesterday? 98. He looks 96 to me. He looks so good. I want to say, yeah, okay. I want to say, so I'm new to Manhattan Beach. I moved here 28 years ago. And I moved at the end of August. And, oh, look, there they are. And we lived at, well, let me tell the story first. So we had been here about a month. We had two very, very small children, and we had lots and lots of boxes. And, you know, you move, and it's hard. I was tired. It was a Saturday morning, early October. My husband could actually sleep in because it was a weekend. He didn't need to, you know, commute or whatever. And all of a sudden, we hear this Dixieland jazz out our back window. And I'm like, honey, what the is going on? Right? And not only that, but we see hundreds of people walking through our alley. And I'm like, this, we have moved into, like, the Children of the Corn Town, right? And it's like, all of a sudden, there's this music, and there's this trombone, and a clarinet, and a saxophone. And what is happening? Are we being summoned? And then, of course, for those of you who don't know, that was, we lived near the start of the Hometown 10K. And it was a tradition for the Hyperion Outfall Serenaders to play their music before the race kicked off. So I have, now, I have a fond, fond, fond place in my heart for those days when that happened. So I really do connect to the Hyperion Outfall Serenaders. I've gotta force myself to say that. I do. I connect very, very much. This is my definition of what it means to live in Manhattan Beach. So I'm thrilled to call down Bob, or Lincoln, I'm so sorry. Lincoln, Katie, Ann, and Livali, if you could come down here. Truly. Truly, this is what it's all about, right? To live someplace like this. And it's important that, who, everyone's there. It's important that we recognize this, and hopefully, we don't have to wait that long for the next one. But again, 50 years tonight, 98 years old. I'm gonna hand it over to you, Lincoln, to say something because this is important.
I never have much to say, but I'll try. So the funny, the funny story is, can you hear me okay? The funny story is, Mayor, that 45 minutes before they woke you up, they were in our house waking us up, drinking beer, already getting going, 6:30. So I know what that's like. I was surprised to find out that today is the day. I think that's really kind of poignant. And my father is the one person who would love this moment more than anybody. The crowd, the people, for you all that don't know, the people that our family knows in this, in these chambers, it's everybody. I mean, these are some of the best friends we have, and I'm so impressed with you all for being here. So thank you very much. I don't know what really else to say. I could take off on many different stories, but I liked adding to yours because that was our life with this band. They came and they met at our house, and they were loud, they didn't care. And the first person to not care most was my dad. And so they, these guys, the band could do whatever they want. And same thing when they came back. They kind of decompressed at our house. So it was, it was fun trying to find new places to hide. But I, they were very enjoyable as a kid, following the roller derby and stuff like that. That was, there was a lot of immense experiences, and I'm thankful for them. And thankful for the coattails my father's provided that I can ride and know and love each one of you, so.
Wow, wow.
I brought, we all know, Livali's dad was in my dad's band. He's an absolute founding member of the band. And so I am here to, there he is. Oh, and can I just say, that man, the bald man on the left is Don Lastra. He was a, he was a policeman here in town the whole time I was growing up. And the funny story about Don was that he was also a roller derby referee. And knowing what we know about roller derby referee, and kind of the farce that it is, he was quite the actor and quite good at. There was another cop named Frank Frazier, who played a doctor while, on the roller derby rink. At Fletcher, no, I have nothing good to say about Fletcher. Just kidding. He's a nice guy. But anyway, so I just wanted to give Don his credit. He was a great part of the band and a great part of Manhattan Beach as well, so.
Wow. Let me, I have, I have certificates. I have pins. Oh, my God. I know. Here, pins. We want, we don't want you to be jealous. I'll tell you, during COVID, I don't know if you guys remember, here, Lincoln, this is for your father on the occasion of his birthday.
Thank you so much.
And this is for, I know, this is great. And this is for the 50th anniversary. And, you know, it is sad that they're probably not gonna be continuing on. There's not other folks to do this music, to enjoy it, to give back to the community. And there's, all right, all right. Balls at your court. Wow. Here's to Bob. So, and he also, didn't he also do a bunch of Christmas carols on, at Hercules?
We're appropriately going Hercules to celebrate.
I knew that, I could tell.
And yes, he did it for like decades now. He wrote the words to "A Christmas Tree." And we go down there on Christmas Eve. And we do that about four or five times. And it's, and I mean...
Yeah. And during COVID, they did it over Zoom. And...
Actually, we, well, one night, we were outdoors. They had the outdoors.
Okay. Anyway, one, one night, I remember doing something with Zoom, and I joined in because I think Mike Burke told me. And I was like, I've really arrived. I'm like, doing this, right? So anyway, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for making our community what it is. Okay. Okay, so hang on. I knew you guys were going to Hercules afterwards. Okay. So, yeah. So if I could get the Mayor Protem down here to help hand over those, let's see. Actually, I'll look at the certificates. You're gonna do pins. Whoa, okay. So what's really cool is that you have this, this group of people who maybe, and some of you maybe did too, grew up in the community. There's all these, you know, the great traditions and history you all know. And, you know, 28 years ago, I moved here because I knew it was that kind of place, right? Like, I had the same values, whatever, but I wanted to live here. And this next group of people, who also have like a uniform, it's so cool, did something extraordinary. So they call themselves Pally South Community Team. So as we all know, on February 7th, devastating fires hit the Pacific Palisades and Altadena and other communities. And, you know, the devastation that we just know that we're so lucky to have evaded, but we also, all of us know people. And Toni Knight especially used to live in the Palisades. And so she was, friends were calling her, and she was offering up, you know, extra room in her house. And soon she was, you know, talking to her old friends, and more of them were coming down to Manhattan Beach. And I know this whole group, if I give anyone else credit, I'm gonna mess up. But I just want to say, okay, everyone's pointing. I love that. But what happened was this group of women who live in Manhattan Beach started talking to each other and said, we have to do something for these people, which we all wanted to do, right? So they had a event. And it was for those friends of Toni who told their friends who told their friends, other people who are in Manhattan Beach but displaced by the fires, and some of their other friends in Manhattan Beach. These women also created an incredible resource guide that had, here's my local doctor, here's where I get my shoes fixed, here's who I use for a math tutor, here's other things, right? It was both electronic, it was in print. They got lots of local sponsors. A lot of the downtown restaurants provided food. It started out as maybe, you know, the families affected and maybe, you know, 50 people, and ended up being how many? 500 people showed up in her backyard. Toni, why don't you come down here? You don't want to until, you wanna wait for the other women, or you wanna come down? Come on down, girl. Come on down. So Toni, a member of the American Martyrs Community, had Monsieur Barry speak. I spoke to welcome him. Jennifer Nguyen from the high school. She already left. She spoke. I do want to add, I think it's super important that you all hear this and anybody watching at home, our school district said yes to every single student, that, every single family that wanted to re-enroll in our schools. And American Martyrs did as well. And if you can imagine, we said yes. So at MBUSD, there's 150 families, and at Martyrs, there's 50 families. That's not students, that's families who are now here. And what Toni and this group of women, and I'm gonna call you all down here, have done is create an instant community for them. And so, yeah, it's really an instant and deep. And that night, that night, you know, I said a few words because, you know, I like a microphone. But a lot of the people came up to me afterwards, and their shoulders, they kind of went like this, you know? And they said, I have not felt this relaxed since before the fires. I have not felt this comforted since before the fires. Thank you. This community is blowing us away. And you all need to hear that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a certificate, but if you would like to say a few words, and then we'll introduce your group. But truly, again, you're taking that next step, right? It's building community, whether it's through Dixieland jazz, or matching sweaters, no, or building resources and inviting strangers. We're building community, so please.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, thank you to everybody. Thank you, Mayor Amy, and all of you for inviting us here. We're really honored and humbled and kind of embarrassed because so many people have done so many great things for all the people that were displaced. And what we were doing was really just a small idea. We just, because I had lived up in the Palisades, I knew what it felt like to live there, the community there, and how special that place was. I moved down here in 2017 and realized how great this community is and how wonderful and special it is. And so I really wanted the people that were displaced, moving down here, to realize that although they've lost something, they are also gaining something very special. And whether they're here for a couple months, for a couple years, or if they decide to stay here, we just felt like it was really important for them to feel comfortable and embraced. And it blew us away the way your community, our community, they reacted so wonderfully. They all leaned in. When we started off, as she was saying, we thought it was just gonna be a small group. And when it got to 200, 300 people that had RSVP'd, we realized we needed to reach out to local restaurants to see if they could support because it was getting bigger and bigger. And everybody that we talked to, there wasn't a hesitation. They all said, how can we help? Our prayers are answered. We've wanted to do something, and you've given us this opportunity. And so it really started as something, we were trying to give a little gift to the people that were displaced. But in the end, we were the ones that got the gift because it was the most touching, amazing experience that I've been involved with, seeing everybody lean in, saying, how can I help these people? We will do whatever it takes. And it really touched all of our hearts. And so after that event, we also realized we wanted to continue to do more. And so tonight, really, we just wanted to bring up to all of you that as we move forward, Pally South has created an Instagram account. And we have a great list of people from the Palisades that are now down here. And as we all know, once the tragedy kind of goes away from the news and the news focuses on something else, these people are still suffering, and they're still dealing with all the issues post-trauma from the fires. And they're still trying to navigate it financially, emotionally, socially. And so what we want to do now is just have smaller intimate events for these people so that they can see their community because the one thing that they all felt was that when the fires happened, everyone dispersed all throughout Southern California. And so they miss just seeing people. It's not just missing their homes, but it's missing, seeing their friends that they used to see every day at Starbucks, the grocery store, et cetera. So what we want to do now is we've got three events coming up. And again, so graciously offered by some wonderful people. And the first one is coming up March, and I want to, I just want to say their names correctly. The first event that we're throwing is March 27th, and it's for women that were impacted by the fires. And Dr. Maria Nazarian is holding a mindful retreat. And this event is really just to help these women reconnect with themselves, reconnect with what's going on so that they can start feeling the healing process. And so we're super excited to support that. There's 20 people that get to come, and we're gonna have some food and other things to offer them. And just give this opportunity for them to come together again. And then the, what? Oh.
Oh, no, no. I was just gonna say, do you have your Instagram handle? Maybe you could give that.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, when, do we have, what is our, is it Pally South, @PallySouth? Do you guys have that? Huh? And, okay, and we'll do the email, too. Look at, there's, okay, do you have the little? Oh, we don't have the site.
And I'm gonna call all y'all down here. PallySouth90266@gmail.com. I'll get the microphone.
Okay. Okay. Okay, it's PallySouth90266@gmail.com. And then the Insta is?
I believe it's PallySouth underscore I have no service.
Oh.
It's PallySouth underscore I have no service.
Anyway, okay, so, yeah, and just to, I won't go into the, but we have another one coming up that's at Barry's Fitness. And then we also have another one coming up that is going to be a support group for people that have been impacted by the fires. All the information will be sent out to all the people, and we'll also have it posted on our Insta. And we are also trying to look for merchants that want to do sip and shops, as well as restaurants that would like to do a dine around, a price fixed dine around. So if you have any ideas, please reach out to any of us, because again, we just want to bring these people together, so that they can feel the sense of community and see how special our community really is. And it's a great opportunity for all our local businesses to introduce themselves to these new families. So thank you very much. We're very honored to be here, and we appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony. As I said, David, if you could grab the pins, I'm going to call you all down here. And thank you all for your attention and your engagement. Again, I'm just so proud of our community. Tony, on behalf of our community, there for you. Tiffany Barbara?
Yeah.
Tanya, Tanya Bertino?
She's here.
Okay, I'll hold that. That's for Tiffany. Tiffany? Yep. Sequoia Bohm?
Oh, Bohm.
Okay. You guys can come over a little further, too. Don't be afraid. Okay?
You're not going to bite?
Yeah, help me. I might. Dinet Cubic?
Yeah.
Okay. Alice Di Martino?
Yeah.
Sure. There you go. Here we go. Here we go. Sorry, it's a little bit of a, we have so much going on here. So many good things. Toni, Toni Nguyen? Is she here? Yeah, there she is. Of course she is. Okay, here you go, Toni. Okay. Amy Lang? I don't, she's not here. No. We got Candace Lu?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We have Janine McMurray?
She's crying.
Travis Nice?
She's out of business.
Kirsten Knuckles?
No.
Okay. Kimberly Rosenfeld?
Oh, my, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Carrie, Carrie Dalen?
They're coming out. They're finding our events.
Yeah. Becky Vandervin?
Becky.
No, but it's important that we announce them all, right?
Yes.
And Patricia Van Hunsik De Jong. So I'd love, yes, I'd love to do a photo if we can gather around. We might need two rows. But
I'm short, I'll go down.
Yeah. But, all right, here we go. I'm going to put this mic down.
Aw, man, so sweet.
Ready?
Come on in.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
It is PallySouth underscore community.
Yes, the Instagram is PallySouth underscore community. Yes, you have, yes, you may leave. I mean, I think it's fascinating.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to grab my wallet.
So we're going to wait a minute, but if you could take the conversations out to the lobby. Unfortunately, we have a full night. A full night. So follow the green shirts. I know. I know. I want to think, wait, where did Steve go? Uh-oh.
I think he went to get his water.
He's off to Hercules.
He's off to Hercules. I do want to thank my council members for indulging. We, we do try to keep ceremonials to a minimum, but those two groups really deserved our time.
All right. That was fun.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Louis, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Louis, for bringing it to our attention.
Hey, y'all.
Okay. Let's move on. I don't, let's see. I need an approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading.
Adam, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull an item.
Okay. Why don't we move and second it, and then?
Perfect.
No, 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 we should, we should second it. We can do it two ways. But go ahead. Tell me what you'd like to pull.
Number eight.
Okay, so we have an approval of the agenda with consent. Item eight has been pulled. Are there any other items? Okay, so that has been pulled by Councilmember Tarnay and seconded by Mayor Protem Lesser. If we could have a vote. Okay, excellent. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, at this time, oh, sorry, somebody said to me, community announcements, and also city council announcements, one minute per person. These are information about events coming up in the community.
Good evening. Libby Bret Howard, Financial Services Manager. Next week, the Acting Finance Director. But I wanted to take the opportunity one more time to invite everyone to take our budget survey. That's online. I was really hoping to catch the room full of people here. But maybe they'll watch the recording and are still watching. But so we have an online budget survey that will be open through the end of the month, on March 31st, to give us your budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. And then we will be presenting the results at an upcoming city council meeting. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Okay. Don't be shy.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. My name's Adam Feinstein. I'm your planning manager here in the Community Development Department. I'd like to take an opportunity to inform the public about an upcoming community forum to discuss the Residential Overlay District, or the ROD. At this meeting, city staff will provide background on the ROD, why it was established, and its implications for future development projects in the city. Most importantly, the forum will provide residents with an opportunity to share their insights. The forum is scheduled for Wednesday, April 9th, at 6:00 PM at the Jocelyn Community Center. And additional information on the ROD can be found at www-manhattanbeach.gov/rod. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Important information. Hello, Josh.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to let the community know that the Friends of the Library will be having their quarterly book sale this Saturday, March 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Come visit the FOL's quarterly book sale for amazing deals on gently-used books, and all sales benefit the library. Children are invited to join us on Saturday, March 29th, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM for fused glass treasure boxes presented by Fireworks Studio. Join us for a program where science, art, and history fuse together with hands-on glass project making. You will learn about glass and create your own fused glass treasure box. This is for ages 5 to 12, with their parent or caregiver. And registration is available on our website, lacountylibrary.org. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, city officials, Mr. Lee. My name is Bobby Bell. I am the WM Recycling Educator for the beautiful city of Manhattan Beach. Just a couple quick updates. Saturday, I'm sure as you guys all know, was International Global Recycling Earth Day. I did not know that either, but there was an event at Manhattan Village, and WM was happy to come up there, table it, play games with the kids. It was a great event, handed out some Home Organic pails. It really went well. Tomorrow, if you guys are interested, we'd love to see some city council members there, Grandview Elementary is having their STEAM event. It's the best elementary STEAM event I've ever been a part of. We will have a table there along with the Manhattan Beach Unified School District's Green Committee. And then as Chamber Commerce member, Thursday night is the Young Executives Mixer at Shade Hotel at 5:30. That's all I got, until Miss Horwath.
Yep, I got some. Could you please explain to those of me, now what STEAM is?
Science, technology, and math.
Engineer.
Environment and math.
Environment?
The kids put on experiments, the kids put on
Arts.
build things and showed, I mean, that's, they're way smarter than I was at that age. There are a lot of them are way smarter than I am at my age. But
Great, thank you.
It's a great event.
And what time?
3:00 till 6:00 tomorrow.
6:00. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other community announcements? Chief Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor Horworth, members of the city council. Rachel Johnson, your police chief. And I wanted to take this opportunity to invite the community to our town hall meeting, which is being held on April 2nd, at the Jocelyn Center, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. From 6:00 to 7:00 PM will be a Neighborhood Watch meeting. We'll be celebrating the 45th anniversary of Neighborhood Watch in Manhattan Beach. And from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, we will have our town hall. The community is invited to come and enjoy both parts of our town hall. And if there are any questions that they would like us to answer at the town hall, you can email us at askacop@manhattanbeach.gov. And we will answer those questions and any other questions from the audience on the day of the town hall. Again, that is Wednesday, April 2nd, from 6:00 8:00 PM at the Jocelyn Center.
Thank you. Okay, any other community announcements? All right, we're going to move on to public comments. Those are three minutes per person. You may provide public comments on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, including items on the agenda. But if you do speak now on something that is also included later on the agenda, you forfeit your right to speak later. You get one bite at the proverbial apple. So, three minutes per person.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, city council. My name is Eric Martin. I'm representing the Roundhouse Aquarium. I'm speaking on a very, something that's super important. On our beaches in South Bay down here, we're having a very, we're having a lot of animals coming up dead on the beaches. Dolphins, sea lions. Just today, we had five dolphins coming up on the beach.
Wow.
A little kid, actually a young teenager from Las Vegas, almost got hit in the head with the, with the tail, because it's flopping on the beach. Sea lions are turning crazy, and people think that they want to get selfies by them, they're getting bit. This is a very serious matter. And what's causing this matter is something called domoic acid. So what domoic acid, people are trying to tell me, they think, you know, we have a red tide, everything. It's actually, without getting technical with anybody, it's a plant, plankton, called pseudonicha. Don't ask me how to spell it, I'm terrible with that stuff. Something with this pseudonicha is making this plankton react badly. And it's, and it's making this domoic acid, it's making the domoic acid, and it's going into the, it's producing it, and sardines are eating it. And then the sea lions are eating the sardines, whole food chain's coming up. So what this, this stuff does, it turns the brain crazy. So it has no idea what it's doing. So the dolphins are coming up on the beach, sieging. So if somebody sees a dolphin, don't try to turn it around and get it back in the water. It will come back up again. It's a death sentence for the dolphin. Yesterday, there was, there was four dolphins as of, what was it, 11:00 this morning, that washed up on the beaches from basically Redondo down into El Porto. That's not including the 30, 40 birds that are dying daily of some of the Manhattan Beach animal care is driving up and down the beach. So when you see a bird on the beach, especially the cormorants, the dark ones along the beach, don't try to get a selfie from it. You're going to get your eyes poked out. They're crazy from that. So the best thing to do, what I'm telling everybody to do, is if you see an animal, tell your kids, tell people at schools, whatever, it's super important. If you see one of these animals on the beach, go right away, even if you don't know the phone number, go to the lifeguard. They will call the proper people. There is a 50-foot law that prohibits people going into these animals that are on the beach. When you think a sea lion is laying there on the, on the sand, and you think it's half-dead, I've seen kids come up and try to touch it, and they get basically bit, they will outrun you, even though, because they're crazy. So the best thing that I can tell you, when you see an animal like this, right now, just go tell a lifeguard. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. It's important information.
Hi, Jackie.
Good evening. My name is Jackie May. I'm from the Marine Mammal Care Center, and I'm a first responder. I've been, been called out on six sea lions for about the last three weeks. We've, we actually had 10 dolphins today in, in our area. And we've, we've been having 10 to 15 and more sea lions. We can't pick them all up. Our hospital is full. All the hospitals up and down the coast are full. We just set up our parking lot to, to keep the animals. We, the medicine, we give them antiseizure medicine, that's on back order. So we're, we're in a lot of trouble. The, this algae bloom is not going to let up for the foreseeable future. We, we patrol 75 miles of Los Angeles County Coast beaches. And Manhattan Beach, Hermosa, and Redondo, and Dockweiler, that's Area 2, and Palos Frutti's. And that's, that's where I work. And, let's see, I've got all these numbers here, and I'm terrible with numbers. About 45% of animals that beach are in our, our area. So it's
You mean on Manhattan?
Pardon?
Yeah.
So what we're asking is if you could possibly put on your agenda to consider joining us and helping us fund our costs. We're 501(c)(3). And by the way, if anybody has any ideas about fundraisers, and I know there's so many problems right now with so many people needing money and help, this is, this is a public safety issue. I want to tell you that yesterday, I was in Redondo Beach at the harbor, and there was a young, about probably two-year-old female sea lion on the, on the ramp. And a, a couple came up with four children under five, and the children wanted to go down and talk to the sea lion. The guy got angry with me because I don't look like a cop or anything. So it, I said, they can outrun you two ti, three times faster than we can run on rocks or sand. They just propel themselves. So it's extremely dangerous. And their bite is really nasty. They have teeth like a dog, and they're a bit bigger, and just full of bacteria. It's really bad. The, the illness does make them crazy, and they can react if they feel threatened. But a lot of times, they're lethargic, and they don't react. And now, we just have so many animals that a lot of them are not making it. So we really need help, and I don't know what else I can tell you.
Can you share the number that people should call?
I'm sorry?
To report.
Yeah. If anyone is on the beach and sees a marine animal stranded, or even a whale, you can call us at 1-800-39-WAIL. And that's our direct line to our rescue trucks. We have four trucks. And we'll come out as fast as we can and, and handle the problem.
And we, we would talk at the end of our meeting, we talk about future agenda items. So if at that moment, you know, you know, we decide to put it on the agenda, someone will let you know. But are you looking for volunteers as well, to like, keep people away?
Absolutely. I will train you myself.
Okay.
I'm training people on the beach, just to, just stay away. You've got to stay 50 feet away by Noah Law. Because they're so fast. They don't look like it. They're fat, and they're really cute. They have whiskers and big eyes.
Yeah.
Everybody wants to go pet them.
It's true. Well, Jackie, thank you for what you're doing. Yeah, okay. No, but thank you so much. And it really is a huge issue for us locally right now, like never before. So thank you for bringing it, attention to it.
Thank you.
Is there a website we can go to to donate?
Just Marine Mammal Care Center. We're all over the place. You can find us very easily. Marine Mammal Care Center.
And I know that we've put out on our social media in the past, "Don't approach." And we can do that again, but we'll talk at the end if somebody wants to bring it up.
I'll stay.
Okay, great. Anyone else for public comments? I see the chief coming down.
Good evening, once again, Mayor Horworth, and
Welcome.
Members of the city council. Rachel Johnson, your police chief. And I'll start by echoing those comments about the sea life that is washing ashore on our beaches. Please stay away from it. I know that, you know, the sea lions, they seem like, you know, almost like dogs, but they're dogs that bite. So let's stay away from them. And also, if you can't remember the number to call the Marine Mammal Care Center, you can also call our non-emergency number. Our animal control folks will come out, they'll assess it.
Thank you.
They will put a perimeter around the animal, and they will contact the Marine Mammal Care Center for you. So if you don't know who to call, call us. We will get the ball rolling and get things started. But above all else, please stay away from these ill and injured wildlife. They're called wildlife for a reason, because they are wild, and they don't respond well to human interaction, especially when they're unwell. So don't hesitate, hesitate to give us a call. We will help out, and we will get the ball rolling and get the animal to proper care.
Chief, can you share the number, the non-emergency number, for those that are listening?
Sure. It's 310-545-4566.
Thank you.
And if you forget, it is on the Reach Manhattan Beach app. You can just tap the link that says "non-emergency number." It will say "call." You press that, you call, and it'll put you in contact with our dispatch center. So I'm trying to make it as easy as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you need us, please, please don't hesitate to call us about any marine life or anything else related to animals, to include keeping your dogs leashed on the beach, so they don't have an interaction.
I wonder why they're on the beach, those dogs.
Well, they shouldn't be on the beach. And that's what I'm here to talk about, really, is keeping your dogs, leashed dogs, off the beach, and definitely unleashed dogs off the beach. We do write citations for that. We do it every month. In February, we wrote 22 citations for dogs off-leash. We've written 31 total this year. So we do take that very seriously, that dogs aren't allowed on the beach. And so please, take your dogs to the dog park for off-leash recreation, and please keep them off our beach. And just be kind to our beach in general, and kind to our animal control officers, who are dealing with a lot right now with regard to all of these animals coming ashore, as well as the proliferation of ill or injured birds with influenza of some kind.
Oh, my goodness.
And before I shuffle off onto the stage and back to my seat, I also wanted to just remind the community of being, riding their bikes, electric regular bikes safely in our community. It's very important to the police department that we continue to encourage safe riding through both education and enforcement. We actually prefer education over enforcement. So please help us out by continuing to ride safely, encouraging your friends, neighbors, children, loved ones to ride safely. Because again, we don't like enforcement, but we do it. We wrote 22 tickets in February for a total of 44 on the year outside of our direct enforcement efforts. We'd much prefer to, you know, just honk a horn and wave a hand for someone who's stopping at stop signs and wearing their helmets. But please help us by riding responsibly and letting us just do the education rather than, rather than the enforcement part of our jobs with regard to bicycle safety.
Thank you so much, Chief. Really appreciate it. Are there any other public comments? All right, seen none in chambers. Are there any on Zoom?
Wait, do we have Todd Cogan?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Todd Cogan, and I want to acknowledge that tonight's meeting is not specifically about the Residential Overlay District or high-density housing. However, given the significance and the long-term impact these developments will have on our city, I'll take every opportunity I can to raise my voice and concerns and push for responsible planning. First, I want to recognize that I received a response yesterday to my previous letter, and I appreciate that communication. But I remain concerned that the city is not taking a strong enough stance against the city, against the state's mandated density increase. We need our elected officials to push back against Sacramento and fight for local control over over zoning decisions. The state is forcing policies onto our community without considering our city's size, infrastructure, traffic congestion, and emergency preparedness. Manhattan Beach is a small four mile, four square mile coastal community with no multi-tenant housing along Sepulveda. These high-density projects are being approved without considering their full impact on traffic, safety, or, and infrastructure. Meanwhile, developers are exploiting waivers and density bonuses, prioritizing profit over responsible urban planning. Recent disasters like the Palisades and the Altadena fires highlight how dangerous it is to increase population density without adequate emergency evacuation plans. If we were faced with a wildfire or earthquake or tsunami event, how would we safely evacuate thousands of additional residents when our roads are already gridlocked? I urge the city council to take the following actions. Advocate for local control, work with the neighboring cities, Hermosa, Redondo, El Segundo, and push back against Sacramento's overreaching. Set height restrictions. Manhattan Beach should have building height limits that fit our city, not Manhattan, New York. And prioritize emergency preparedness. Before approving any large-scale developments, we need traffic studies and evacuation plans in place. While I know the residential isn't, overlay isn't on the agenda tonight, I will continue to raise these issues at every opportunity because the impact of these decisions will permanently change our community. I appreciate the council's time and I ask you to take a strong stand to protect the safety, character, and livability of Manhattan Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional request on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close public comments. And as we go to the consent calendar, which, number eight was pulled and so we're going to take a motion to approve without that, but I also have something I need to read before we do that regarding number seven. I did not pull number seven, but I want to read something about number seven, which, sorry, I don't know if y'all can see the stack of paper I have here, it's very hard to navigate. So number seven is consideration of a resolution appointing Michael Codron as interim community development director and approval of an employment agree with Michael Codron. So that's the item number and I would like to read a statement. Prior to the approval of the consent calendar, item number seven recommends the appointment of Michael Corden, sorry, Corden, as interim community development director while the city continues its recruitment efforts for a permanent replacement with the partnership of an executive recruitment firm. We wish to express our sincere words of gratitude to Ryan Heiss for his exceptional dedication over the past year, truly, during which he has skillfully managed dual responsibilities of both our building official and acting director of community development department. This interim appointment will provide acting director Heiss with well-deserved relief and enable him to resume his primary duties as building official. So I know no one is happier about number seven than you. Mr., it's true. Mr. Corden brings nearly three decades of distinguished experience in urban planning and city management to this role. He retired from public service in 2023 after serving as assistant city manager and community development director for the city of San Luis Obispo. For transparency regarding fiscal matters, Mr. Corden will be compensated at an hourly rate of $113.25 and will not receive additional benefits. This agenda item fulfills the CalPERS requirements for the interim appointment of a CalPERS retiree to a vacant position. So we're really grateful for this opportunity to bring Mr. Corden's expertise to our team during this transition period. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar minus, was the exception, number eight. And that's been moved by Councilmember Franklin and seconded by Councilmember Ternay. Call for the question?
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, excellent. So item number eight, Councilmember Sherrillian, that was you?
Thank you, yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this item because I wanted to take the opportunity to have our city manager, subject matter expert, all things community development, being the former community development director, to remind city council and the public why the city was required to include the implementation of the residential overlay zone as one of the programs in the six-cycle housing element and what the repercussions would have been if the city did not adopt the ROD.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherrillian. I am going to try my best to simplify what is an extremely complex and nuanced matter for the benefit of the public and for the benefit of the council. The, every city has a housing element as part of their general plan. It's one of the mandated elements, but what makes this element unique is that as each city, each municipality has to update that housing element every eight years. There are actually repercussions if you don't meet certain timelines, they shorten that, so you're subject to updates every four years, for example. In our cases, every eight years, the six-cycle housing element ranges between 2021 and 2029. And in order to get certified, in order to get our housing element certified, we had to meet numerous requirements that HCD, they check for, but it's included within state housing law. One of those requirements includes demonstrating through your housing element how you are going to accommodate the regional housing needs assessment capacity. So what that is, is a number that is dictated by SCAP, SCAG, for every city, and it says, this is your city's share of meeting the state's housing needs. Now go and show us how you are going to accommodate those housing needs. And, and the way we do that is through zoning. And as you can imagine, because the state has declared, has proclaimed a housing crisis, those numbers were significantly higher for the six-cycle than they have been historically. In fact, the six-cycle housing element requirements through housing, updated housing law were so stringent that, that the process was elongated and more complex for every municipality, including ourselves. So in order to demonstrate how we were going to meet our RENA number of 774 units, the majority of which are required to be low-income units, moderate, very low, low-income, and a minority of which is required to be above moderate. To do that, through the multi-year process that was, you know, the preparation of our housing element, we conducted multiple public study sessions, workshops to get community feedback, but also the housing element law itself has very stringent requirements on what sites meet the criteria to be included in this inventory. Some, but not all, I'll just explain where, you know, it's based on size, building conditions, development trends on certain sites, known developer interests, et cetera. And so it was a very complex process to be able to identify the sites that were eventually identified for our ROD. And those are 34 sites comprised of 75 parcels, mainly along Rosecrans and Sepulveda with some on Artesia, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, as well as Aviation. But we didn't have to just demonstrate how are we meeting the 774, but also we had to demonstrate a buffer because there is a potential situation where one of those sites in the residential overlay gets redeveloped utilizing the underlying zoning district, which was Commercial General, at which point we've lost that capacity. And so you do have to demonstrate a buffer. So we did that. There was a residential overlay zoning district without which we would not have been able to obtain certification for our six-cycle housing element. Without certification for your housing element, the city is at risk for unlimited lawsuits from the state, from housing advocate, advocacy groups, from developers. Additionally, there is a high likelihood that you will lose your permitting authority and I will highlight the fact that recently HCD has created what's called the Housing Accountability Unit and they are very closely looking at what cities are doing to be, to meet their housing obligations and if there are any impediments created. And so the Housing Accountability Unit is, you know, closely watching what all the municipalities are doing in this sense. If we, and we also would have subjected ourselves to something that is colloquially known as builder's remedy in, in housing element law, and that is the opportunity for developers to come in and build in your city and not be subject to your rules and requirements if you do not have a certified housing element. I hope that addresses your question.
It does, thank you.
Could I?
Yeah.
Yeah, could I ask for some clarification? Who mandated this? Where, where did the mandate come from?
It's state housing element law.
Okay, but voted on and approved by?
The state legislature.
State legislature, okay, thank you.
And part of it's from 19, are we, we're talking about the density bonuses from 1979?
Some of the laws, yes, but some of the newer housing element laws, yeah, are more recent, correct.
Okay, great. Okay, so I need a motion in a second or other, oh, public comments, I got open for public comments. Are there public comments on this item? Come on down. Oh, do you need us to bring you a microphone? Are you? No, I, I was trying to be helpful, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing a quick comment on the topic that you just discussed. I'm, I'm here to talk on, officially on the public hearing, but I've learned too much about this high-rise initiative that we're all going through and I even learned more today as I talked to the state. I guess my question to you is, are we getting any state funding, seeing how the legislature has passed that? Because the explanation I got today on the density bonus was the fact that they're allowing density bonuses to go in because the state has no money to give for the development of these particular low-income ADUs or however you want to word it from that such, and I'll leave that to the planners and everything else from that standpoint. And, and so basically, they are allowing that to go forward and my next comment will, I'll save for the next one, but I, I totally agree with the gentleman's comments that were referenced before in, in his three-minute comments. And I'll save the rest of my remarks for the public hearing, but it's nice to see you all.
It's lovely to see you. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on item number eight from the consent calendar? Okay, I'll close them in chambers, but I, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve item number eight and that motion has been made by Councilmember Franklin and seconded by Councilmember Sherrillian and with comments by Mayor Protem Lesser.
I have a question for staff, our city manager. Can you respond to the question about any funding from the state for low-income housing that's mandated?
So the, the city received a grant in, in order to help us with our housing element update, but we have, don't receive grants for promoting affordable housing development. So I think the connection there is that absent the state having money to fund some of these affordable housing projects, they're looking for ways to incentivize the development by offering things like density bonus to the developers so that the developers can privately fund it. So that's the connection there.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Okay, call for the question?
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public hearings, item number 11. At this time, we will conduct a public hearing for consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Title IX of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code and Chapter A of the Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Program to implement five programs outlined in the city's six-cycle housing element and adopting a resolution authorizing city staff to submit ordinance number 25-0004 to the coastal, California Coastal Commission to incorporate said amendments into the local, sorry, local coastal program. It's so easy to say. Hello, Ryan.
You did better than myself, so I'm going to leave with that, but Ryan Heiss, acting community development director. And item 11, as you mentioned, I'm going to introduce Associate Planner Mariselle Guian to provide the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Horwath and members of city council. Mariselle, Mariselle Guian, Associate Planner. Tonight, we will be discussing the implementation of five programs outlined in the city's housing element through a zone text amendment. So first, we'll be going over some background on how we got here. Next, we'll identify specific programs in the housing element that will be the focus of tonight's presentation and provide an overview of the specific chapters of the zoning code that if approved would be amended. Then we'll dive into the specifics of each program and how staff proposes to implement each program. We will go over the environmental review conducted for this project, provide a summary of the planning commission's feedback and consideration, and lastly, present staff's recommendation to city council. To provide some background on how we arrived to this evening's request, in September of 2022, the city council adopted the six-cycle housing element. After council adopted the housing element, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, certified the city's housing element in July of 2023. After HCD certification, the city has an obligation to implement the programs in the city's housing element. Implementation of the housing element programs is state-mandated pursuant to Government Code Section 65585. The implications for not implementing the programs include the loss of city's permitting authority, loss of funding opportunities, HCD citations and/or penalties, and it opens the city up to potential litigation. Certain housing element programs require code amendments to Title 10 of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code, or MBMC, and Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Program, also known as MBLCP. The housing element has a total of 31 programs, however, for the purposes of this proposed zone text amendment, these are the five programs that this project aims to implement. In order to comply with state mandates to implement these five programs identified in the last slide, these are the chapters that would be amended if approved by city In this next portion of the presentation, I will be going over the five programs in more detail and how the draft zone amendments implement each program. I will also provide a high-level summary of the community impact of each program. Starting with program number one, accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, the primary objective of this program is to update our current ADU ordinance in order to comply with the latest state ADU laws. If approved, the creation of new LCP chapter would also be added to allow the review of ADUs in the coastal zone. Some of the key proposed amendments to the existing ordinance would include allowing legalization of unpermitted JADUs, implement limitations on replacement parking requirements for uncovered parking spaces, allow for a greater number of ADUs on multifamily lots, and to clarify ADU categories that require a streamlined building permit process. The city's local ADU ordinance has been in place since January of 2019. Since then, staff has observed an increase in the popularity of ADUs as they can provide for additional flexibility for existing and proposed single and multifamily development. The existing regulations have largely been carried forward in this current draft ordinance, but as drafted, has been updated to comply with the latest state law requirements. So program three, affordable housing streamlining. The objective of program three is to ensure a streamlined administrative review process for qualifying density bonus projects. Before we review the proposed administrative review processes, I think it's important to understand the term ministerial. So a decision on a ministerial project involves no personal judgment by a public official. The decision-maker merely ensures that the proposed development meets all the objective zoning standards, but uses no special discretion or judgment in reaching a decision. And this definition was pulled largely from HCD's guidelines. So the chart before you on the slide provides a breakdown of how projects involving city So the chart before you on the slide provides a breakdown of how projects involving six or more units would be reviewed if approved. Six or more units eligible for density bonus projects would be reviewed through a ministerial precise development plan, or PDP, subject to the Director of Community Development's decision. Market-rate multifamily housing projects of six or more units that are not eligible for a density bonus would be reviewed through a site development permit, or SDP. SDPs would continue to be reviewed by the Planning Commission with a focus on compliance with objective standards. Other measures aimed to implement Program Three would include adding a requirement to notify properties within 500 feet of a PDP approval site. As drafted, the director's decisions on PDPs are final, with no option to appeal in order to comply with Program Three's objective to streamline PDP projects. In the coastal zone, PDP projects would be classified as minor development in order to waive coastal hearings and to streamline the coastal development permit process. And lastly, objective development standards were developed, which would apply both to PDP and SDP projects. Program Three of the city's housing element aims to revise the current PDP process to ensure there is a streamlined administrative process for development eligible for density bonus projects. Staff has drafted the zoning amendment to provide clear objective standards and sustain local decision-making authority by maintaining the SDP review process. Program 11 relates to density bonus. The primary purpose or objective is to update the existing density bonus ordinance to ensure compliance with current state density law, state density bonus law, rather. As drafted, some key amendments to the ordinance would include allowing up to 80% bonus for 100% affordable development, update provisions related to student and senior affordable housing developments, created a density bonus application to clarify the permitting process, and to clarify the approval authority for density bonus projects vested with the community development director, with the decision being final and not appealable. The city's density bonus ordinance has been in effect since 2013. Government Code Section 65915 requires the city to adopt a local density bonus ordinance consistent with state law. To satisfy this requirement, the draft density bonus ordinance has been updated to ensure compliance with state law. Program 16 relates to incentives for lot consolidation. The objective of this program is to create an additional density bonus incentive applicable to specific sites identified on the city's housing element sites inventory, or Appendix E. As drafted, the proposed amendments would allow a 5% base density bonus when two or more parcels are consolidated into a single building, site with a combined parcel size between approximately 13,000 and 21,000 square feet, or 0.3 to 0.49 acres. The city's housing element site inventory, or Appendix E, identifies properties throughout the city that have a potential for housing development. The purpose of this program is to incentivize the combination of these smaller lots to create a more cohesive project. And lastly, Program 18, as it relates to mixed-use regulations. The purpose of this program is to eliminate the use permit requirements for multifamily and mixed-use development in the city's three commercial mixed-use zones. As drafted, the proposed amendments would include multifamily and mixed-use development projects would be processed either through a PDP, if it's eligible for a density bonus, or through an SDP for projects only proposing market-rate housing. In addition, the language was clarified to state that a commercial portion of a mixed-use development may be subject to a use permit, depending on whether the commercial use requires the use permit. The Planning Commission would be responsible for rendering a decision on the use permit portion element of such mixed-use project. As drafted, the proposed multifamily and mixed-use development would be reviewed for conformance with new objective development standards that would not reduce the intensity of any land use capacity and largely reflect the existing high-density residential standards in our current code. The SDP process would replace the use permit process for market-rate multifamily projects not eligible for density bonus projects. The proposed zone text amendments were reviewed for consistency with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, as part of the six-cycle housing element. A negative declaration and a first addendum were approved in March and September of 2022. A second addendum to the adopted negative declaration was prepared for the proposed zone text amendments in accordance with Section 15164 of the state SEQA guidelines. As detailed within the second addendum, adoption of the zone text amendments implementing the five programs of the city's six-cycle housing element would not result in any potential significant environmental impacts. The Planning Commission conducted two study sessions and one public hearing on the proposed code amendments. Some of the key Planning Commission input that was received was to include a notice of decision requirements was revised per the Planning Commission's input to expand the radius to 500 feet. The Planning Commission expressed some concern with retaining their discretionary review authority. So earlier iterations of the draft code that was proposed to the Planning Commission had a combination of a PDP and SDP that was a combined process, but after hearing their input, the PDP and SDP were maintained as separate processes, and the SDP would continue to be reviewed by the Planning Commission to retain some of their authority, review authority. And the ministerial density bonus projects, or in PDP projects, would be subject to a director's decision with no appeals. A public hearing on February 26, 2025, whereby a 4-0 vote by the Planning Commission recommended the City Council consider and approve staff's recommendation. Staff recommends the City Council conduct a public hearing, introduce an ordinance to amend the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code and the Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Plan to implement five programs outlined in the city's six-cycle housing element, and to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to submit said ordinance to the California Coastal Commission to incorporate said amendment into the Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Plan. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Wow, deep breath. That was a lot of very technical information presented very clearly. Thank you, well done. Let me move, I can't see my screen. Now I can see it. So let me ask my colleagues if there are questions before I open it up for the public at this public hearing. Council, I mean, Mayor Protem Lesser.
I have questions related to the practical impact of what we're doing tonight, looking at a council chamber that is not really full, where we're on the precipice, on the eve of making a decision that will significantly change our community. So let's talk about what this practically means. What are the potential heights of projects that would be developed under the precise development permit process if the amendments are approved? As staff analyzed, how large, how many stories are we potentially talking about?
I'll take that question, Mayor Protem Lesser, thank you. The amendments proposed today do not have an impact on the height that the developers build, and I say that because it's really about streamlining the processes. The density bonus law, that is the number-one law that impacts what the height of a project could be, those state laws have been, that state law has been in place since the 70s. It's really state density bonus law which supersedes local government law, no matter what our ordinance says, that builds in this opportunity for something called a waiver. This waiver that's built into state density bonus law allows for developers to build higher than what cities allow, bigger than what cities allow, in order to be able to accommodate affordable units. And so if a project is incorporating affordable units, then they are automatically entitled to anything that's offered under state density bonus law. So what you're seeing in front of you today, specific to density bonus law, is an update of our local ordinance to comply with what the state ordinance says, which already supersedes no matter what ours says.
Right, so I understand that, but I'm wondering to what extent staff has projected how high we might see projects, particularly with the residential overlay zone, which is not directly on, for us to consider tonight, is already leading to prospective projects that will be significantly higher than what the public sees today?
It's really hard to quantify that because each project is different.
Okay, let me move on.
One project could ask for one story above what the height limit is, and of course, keep in mind that height limit is different in different locations. So one project could ask for one story to be able to accommodate the number of units they're entitled to under density bonus law, where another project may need two stories. So it is truly hard to quantify that.
So let's talk about how the process will change in reviewing applications for these projects. What's been stated is there'll be a change in discretion, and I want to try and define that a little bit better, because I think it's too kind of fuzzy of a term. Can we describe what the process is now or has been prior to the adoption of our housing element, specifically with a use permit? And it goes through what process? It goes through the city staff? It goes to a planning commission if it meets certain criteria? And then it ultimately comes to council, correct?
Right now, the PDP does have an appeals process built into it, which is appealable to the Planning Commission and then to the City Council. However, the PDP even today is an administrative nondiscretionary process in today's code. Therefore, even though there is appeal opportunity, the council and the Planning Commission's authority is also limited to confirming that the project complies with local and state laws with no discretion.
So to be clear, I have a certain tone and a frustration in my voice because I'm not upset with our city staff, but I'm upset with what the state is imposing on our community, and I don't think it's been clear. So let me continue with what these amendments will mean, particularly for the precise development permit projects. There will be no longer public input that will be received for these sorts of projects that would ordinarily go to the Planning Commission and ordinarily come to the council, correct?
There is a 500-foot notice requirement, which, so the 500-foot noticing requirement would be after a director would make a decision. However, staff, based on Planning Commission's input that was received, were considering a policy of providing a, maybe twice-a-year update to the commissioners of any recently approved or through the pipeline PDP projects or density bonus projects, as well as maintaining our city's website so that the public can also be involved with projects.
But with due respect, again, I'm not upset with city staff. So a resident that lives within 500 feet of this project is going to get a notice, and they send in their comments, of what impact will that even matter to the development of a project?
The decision would have already been made.
So what's the point of 500-foot notice, other than just to alert these neighbors?
It's a courtesy notice.
It's a courtesy notice, all right. So let's confirm again of how these projects will proceed. They will go through the Community Development Department, and we're not just talking about a single Community Development Director, but ultimately, it's the Community Development Director, in this case, we've just appointed, and we're grateful that we have someone who's willing to serve in this role in our city, an interim Community Development Appointed. And can you describe again what their authority will be?
Yes, so to that, I would say that there's a lot that goes on before a project gets to a point that it could be approved. There have been other precise development plan projects that have come forward in this city. It has taken them almost two years to get them to a point where the Community Development Director was able to approve it. And so as a part of the process, it goes through a very stringent review through multiple staff members, through our legal counsel, in order for us to get to a decision on a project. So I do want to highlight that it's not a decision made by a Community Development Director or any single person in a vacuum. It is thoroughly vetted before we get to the point, not to mention the number of times it goes back and forth between staff and the applicant, to get it to a point where it conforms with all of the local ordinances as well as the state ordinances.
I'm almost done, but just to confirm, those decisions are final and cannot be appealed, is that right?
That is correct.
All right. So we have received comments via email and also from residents speaking this evening to ask why our city is not fighting back. And I asked the city attorney to just describe about cases so far about those cities that have fought the adoption of measures similar to these in their jurisdictions, because this is a one-size-fits-all, and now I'm offering commentary. And for every community that's been forced to adopt it and those that have challenged it, what has occurred?
Well, so two things. The issue tonight would be if the council did not adopt this, the risk is that the HCD would decertify our housing element, builder's remedy cases. And the city manager, well, there's a lot more than builder's remedy cases, as the city manager said earlier, but the cities that don't have certified housing elements and the ones that have been decertified have had a, it's hard to quantify, but I, let's just say, a large number of builder remedy case, you know, applications, which means they can basically build what they want.
So what are we talking about in terms of height and scale?
It's tough to say. I just know that, because we track that in my firm, we represent a number of cities that have to deal with this, and I'm aware of about 20 trial court decisions in which cities have lost on the builder's remedy. The only one that I'm aware of that has actually won a case was Redondale Beach because they were in the coastal zone, and in that particular case, the court ruled that they needed a coastal permit. So I don't know the status of that, I don't know if it was appealed by the property owner, but all the other cases, and I'm not going to name all the other cities, but the cities are getting, are losing all these cases.
Would this then be characterized as Sacramento state legislature and governor, these are state laws, basically taking back the ability to approve these sorts of projects and removing our ability?
Yes, it's, as mentioned by the person at the beginning of the meeting, it's local control.
So what's our point as a city council? Why are we even here? Sorry, rhetorical question.
That's a rhetorical question, right?
But it's somewhat serious as it relates to entitlement these properties. I'm confused.
It's so tough for cities, and it's been mentioned several times, it's legislative fix.
I'll stop here for now, thank you.
Are there any other questions right now before I open it up to the public, for the public hearing?
Yes. Okay. Just sort of tag along with what Mayor Protem Lesser was talking about. I had requested that we go through these housing element programs and see, a lot of us here, a lot of long-term, you know, residents, even short-term residents, you know, have a familiarity with what building has been like before. So I wanted to see, how is it going to be different once this gets, if it gets adopted? So this may take a little bit of time, but I really, I think that would be a helpful exercise, so that, because people know, maybe somebody applied for an ADU. What's different from how they do it now to how they do it afterwards? Same thing with Program Three, you know, affordable housing streamlining. I might recommend that we take, that there are several projects, right, that are listed in the ROD, the Residential Overlay District. the Residential Overlay District, that state, how many units it's going to be, how many stories, things like that, just to get a vision.
This, this does not apply to the, the affordable housing streamlining here with the PDP does not apply to the ROD. That's separate. So I would advise not to discuss that at this time.
All right.
But we can go, can you go to the accessory dwelling unit slide?
So like, for example, ADUs, how many have been applied for? This is SB 9?
No, this is not SB 9. ADUs are separate from SB 9. So SB 9 just allowed for increase in the number of ADUs on the site. But we in Manhattan Beach have not had any completed SB 9 applications. But we do see a number of ADUs being built every year and some junior ADUs as well. Do you want to walk through what this means for the city?
The difference? Yeah.
Sure. We can look up, you know, quantifiably the amount of ADUs that may have been processed through the city within the last few years. I can speak anecdotally to my experience as a planner and, and the other planning department. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance is primarily being updated, hasn't been updated in two cycles. So every year or so, the state provides additional guidelines. And so under proposed ordinance, proposed amendments, these bullets here are meant to provide some of the key highlights of the changes since the last cycle that the legislator approved for the ADU ordinance. So there are certain provisions afforded to ADUs that have been permitted without permits. And so there's a process in which homeowners can come into the city and potentially permit their ADU and, in this case, a junior ADU. And this primarily to incentivize homeowners to get the proper permits and to ensure that the unit is legal. So that's one circumstance in which you may see a change in sort of a relaxation of that code to allow for homeowners to come in for, let's say, a guest house that was...
But, but a homeowner could have realized that it was an unpermitted, maybe they bought the home and it was unpermitted, should show up in the, in the home sales report. But, but they would come in and it would be an after-the-fact, right, ATF?
Correct.
After-the-fact process. Is that similar to this, but it's more lenient perhaps, or?
It's retroactive.
Retroactive. And we have here that 39 permits were issued in 2024 for ADUs.
Okay, great.
But those are, again, single-family homeowners. It's, it's not SB 9. It's not taking down a house and putting up two houses on the lot.
Correct.
It's not that right.
ADUs relate to a single-family, also multifamily.
Okay. But, but there are parking requirements to an ADU. In other words, if you built an ADU, you had to provide a parking spot, I believe, right?
There are parking requirements built into the state code. However, there are certain exemptions that if a site is located within half a mile of a transit stop, then additional parking is not required for that unit. Based on our observation of sites in very close proximity to bus stops, I would say a majority of, of the housing stock that we have in the city is within a half mile of a transit stop.
Okay. So the theory is, is that you're going to take the bus instead of having a car?
But, but again, that is not changing as a part of this code amendment, the, the parking, that, that particular...
Okay. So what is? So, so, so someone who's living next to somebody who's putting in an ADU, what can we expect to change? Is it going to go through faster, the permitting?
It's, it's already fast, yeah.
It's already...
Can you walk through?
It's already, yeah, it's already, it's already faster. I would say, so we, we touched on the first one. There's a clear path forward if you have an unpermitted ADU. It also clears the path for JDU's implementations for replacement parking. So prior, there were certain provisions to say if a ADU or JDU were to take up a existing parking space, that you would need to replace that parking space for the primary dwelling. Now, it's just further stipulates that that requirement for parking does not need to be covered in that circumstance. In multifamily developments, if you wanted to provide additional ADUs, now you can do up to eight. However, they'd all have to be detached. And I would say, based on the current development patterns in our city, the possibility of having eight single detached ADUs on a multifamily lot is probably not feasible.
But you could do two.
You can do up to...
Up to eight.
Yeah.
That's what you could do.
Okay. Did we allow two before or more than one?
Yes. There were certain provisions to say you can do up to, for multifamily, it's 25% of your existing units that you have on site. So if you had four units on your property, 25%, you would be allowed, afforded a step of one, so on and so forth. And then lastly, the ordinance has just been further clarified into different categories. So there are certain provisions that the state has for sort of direct, clear, streamlined process that would take out any sort of, we'd further streamline. Maybe we call them building permit-only criteria. And then there'd be also added in some local, if, if a property owner wanted to go beyond those measures, we could still have some local control over some design standards as well.
Okay. So just one more question on this, where it says, allow greater number of multifamily detached ADUs. Does that mean you can put a duplex in your backyard?
So this relates to the point I was mentioning earlier of you, for multifamily development, you're allowed up to eight detached ADUs on a site.
Okay.
That's what that, that is referring to.
As per the state.
Per the state.
Not per us, but as per.
Correct.
Okay. So that's different. So Programs, Program 3, affordable housing streamlining, I think that's pretty straightforward. It's basically, basically just going to let, it's a ministerial process, no input?
Correct. Where the PDP and SDP are current processes in our existing code. However, based on the program outlined, affordable housing streamlined, there are additional provisions that we need to meet. So PDP process would now be eligible for density bonus projects. SDP would be for six or more units that are at market rate. And so it just further clarifies those processes as well as update the objective design standards that were largely taken from the high-density residential zoning district.
Okay. Program 3, well, also, the notification. So we just learned through earlier questions that it's just a courtesy. There's really nothing they can do. But could we expand that 500 feet on a 50-foot, if homes has a, have a 40-to-50-foot lot, that's only 10 homes, 10 parcels away in each direction?
I, I would say that 500 feet is consistent with what we do for all, most of our other permits in the zoning code, including use permits.
Okay. Can it be wider? The more people that know, the better?
It could be whatever the council dictates.
It can't be less.
Yeah. Okay. So we can do that during any adoption process? We can give that as council direction?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Other que, are you?
Well, no, I'm going to go through, I, I want to give people an idea what, what's going to be coming on the block.
I was curious. I also, I just want to understand.
Yeah. Okay. And then, so coastal development permits? We're going to waive the coastal hearing and, and streamline the process for, for minor developments? So what would be considered a minor development?
So the, this section of the code, is it bullet point 2 here? Is an existing provision that projects undergo where they are categorized as minor development. This is typically your residential projects in the coastal zone. And so in order to streamline the process for these housing projects, the PDP projects would be subject to this minor development standard that's existing in our code currently.
Density bonus is basically just telling them how many extra units they can put in based upon their commitment to low, providing low-income housing. Right?
Yes. The ordinance has been updated to reflect state law. Similarly to the ADU ordinance, where there's lots of references to the state code, that's primarily what our ordinance is, is looking like. It hasn't been updated since 2013, I believe. So there was a lot of catching up to do since that time.
And then basically here again, it's the community development director decision. It's final and it's not appealable. And then lot consolidation. Thank you for putting in the square footage. Not everybody knows how, how many acres or percent of an acre their lots are. So basically, this is saying, you've got two 7,000-square-foot lots. You can combine them, and then you're going to get extra density bonus with whatever project you put on there.
Yes. That's correct. Up to 5% increase.
Up to 5%.
Again, we have a version of this in the code now. This is a more robust version.
Currently, the code, everything in orange on this slide is existing. The, with the arrows is the new provision.
So in a neighborhood, you're not necessarily going to be able to build an apartment building on this combined lot?
Not if it's zoned, single-family residential.
Single, okay. But in the residential overlay district, you can?
Residential overlay district, yes.
If there's two combining, two lots. Okay. And then, so mixed use. I, I didn't quite understand. So the use permit, but what did you have to do before to get a use permit? Did it go through the planning commission?
That's correct.
And then the council to ultimately approve?
Unless appealed.
Unless, okay. Got it. All right. Okay. That's, that's enough questions for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those questions. Councilmember Sherrillian?
Yeah. Quick one. City Attorney Quinn, thank you for kind of pointing out the consequences of this item not going through and the decertification and whatnot. What can we do at our level? Can we advocate at the state level to have them introduce new legislation? I mean, I mean, 2026 is coming up and, you know, we're going to get new elections. But between now and then, can we get something started? Because, you know, I, I feel the frustration of council. I feel the frustration of what Mayor Protem indicated earlier. I mean, there's got to be something that we can start now.
Yeah, definitely. As a city, I mean, after, once again, this needs to be adopted, but we can definitely petition our, you know, local state officials and try to get them to recognize that their one-size-fits-all doesn't really fit in places that are really dense already. And so there's a lot of ideas. And in the past, Manhattan Beach has tried with other cities. And so maybe, you know, we just give it another shot and, and we can see if we can get some local legislators to, to help us in terms of the state officials.
No, thank you for that. And I, you know, and I think we owe it to our, our residents to keep that momentum going and try again. If it didn't work, try, try again. So, thank you.
Yeah. And to that point, I and Councilmember Lesser as well, and Mayor Protem Lesser have been in touch with State Senator Ben Allen. And we've had a little bit of time, a hard time getting all of us together. But he's trying, he's trying very hard to help in a hyper-local way. He, he very candidly, you know, let us know that frankly, up in, getting Sacramento to change the law is going to be very difficult because, you know, the, the majority of folks coming from Northern California, they really, they're demanding this. They want this. And I mean folks by legislators. But he really wants to look really closely at our particular community, whether it's that we're in the coastal zone, whether, you know, different ideas, any ideas. You know, he wants to put his best and brightest behind to help us try to figure this out. For instance, there's a school up in Malibu, also in this district, where the school, the zoning, where the zoning is, the state was going to say the school could not actually enlarge its buildings, its, you know, to address its capacity issues and its curriculum and programs, but that they needed to put an apartment building on, you know. So he's been helping, working with that. So he is, we are working with him to, to make that happen. But I appreciate that question. So Councilwoman Turner?
I think, I just wanted to make the point that none of us sitting up here, I think, based on what I've heard all of us say, supports kind of unrestricted, you know, rules of allowing for the kind of development that, that we're seeing coming down the pipeline. So we will, I mean, I know I personally will be working in whatever capacity I can to push back. But as I understand it, what's being presented before us, we don't really have a choice if we don't want to open up our city to lawsuits or builders' remedy cases that will actually exacerbate the problem and make it worse, that they will be able to come in and build whatever they want at that point. So while I'm, I'm super frustrated, it's been really difficult to learn that there is not much that we can do at this point at the city level that we're going to have to be creative and work with our residents to, to push back. But in the meantime, this is kind of, to me, I see it as a placeholder decision that we have to make to preserve our rights and to ensure that we don't open up ourselves to more liability.
So typically, questions now?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Are there more questions now before we go over to public comments? Okay. Again, deep breath, sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a public hearing. So if there's any public comments on this item, now would be the time.
Good seeing, City Council. Again, my name is Steve Packwood. I lived on Oak Avenue for many, many years. I have four points I'd like to cover today. The first one is, and most of these are under the density bonus application categories. As I understand it, there is a, we, limited things that our city and our planners can do. And that is basically do a review to see if any of these projects severely impact public health and our safety from that standpoint. I asked our city planning department, and I did get somewhat of a response as it relates to that. But I would like to know what the process is. What are we going to do for every application that comes in requesting this density bonus application in terms of that particular area from that standpoint? We should incorporate that in your, whatever regulatory criteria you're going to be approving today or whatever, and give guidance on that particular issue. Secondarily, and I think you're all aware of this, that when we go forward with this whole project, given to us by the state, not funded by the state, the funding is going to lie with, partially on the developer. But then you're going to come back and ask the city to cover the, the difference in all the infrastructure changes that we're going to be having to make, pure and simple. I would like that information to be incorporated into this budget so that the residents of Manhattan Beach can actually see what the state is doing to us and how much it's going to cost. And my recollection of where we are financially is not a very good position at this particular point in time. And that needs to be done and part of the budget process for this year. The third point I have is basically on the overlay. I don't think residents... I don't think residents that I've been talking to are, they understand that we have to develop something to accommodate the 774. I believe our time has passed to appeal that decision back when SCAG recommended it way back when. But I guess, in my mind, there will be better locations for the overlay. And I would like you to reconsider Rosecrans, and I'd like to see us go to the state and ask for waivers on some of the requirements that we turned them down for on some of those lots. All we can do is ask, but at least you be demonstrating to the residents that you are actually not just giving lip service to the state.
Thank you, Steve.
One last point. I've heard this young lady, and welcome to the City Council,
Thank you.
Basically say that you speak for all the councilmembers here that basically are not really supportive. I would like each one of you to go on record and tell the residents that you do not support what's happening, instead of passing the buck and saying, "The state is doing it to us." Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, are there other public comments in chambers? How about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Madam City Manager, there was a comment by Mr. Packwood about why couldn't we do overlay districts on Rosecrans, and I believe there's technical reasons, or?
We do have some.
We do have some, but yeah.
We do have some along Rosecrans, the ones that qualify per the state.
Okay, so the ones that qualify. Sorry, so they, but I know that other people have asked, like, why do we have to do it, those ones on Sepulveda, why couldn't we do them on Rosecrans? And the answer is, we have done some on Rosecrans, et cetera. Okay. So, so this, let me see, go back to my, so, we've conducted the public hearing. We are, we need a motion to introduce, well, Mr. City Attorney, we need to do two motions for B and C, correct?
Comments?
Yes.
I know, I, thank you. I'm just looking to where we are. We, so, so that my council colleagues understand, we will need two motions, and of course, we can have a discussion. As it's been mentioned, we, we really do have little choice. We must introduce these ordinances. I would like to say, I'll start it off by saying, I know that, and we all, well, I can predict that we're all going to say, "I don't want to do this," you know, "I disagree." It's, we're worried about the impact it's going to have on our community. I am all of those things. I do want to say that I know in talking to staff, about some of the different projects already, and some of the future considerations, a lot of consideration is put in by the planners and the folks in community development about public safety, about, you know, does this project impede public safety in terms of access for fire station, you know, fire trucks, et cetera. Our community development department is not rolling over, is what I want to say. Our community development department is looking at design elements that they can add that might discourage a developer or that might make it a little better on a homeowner who is adjacent to a property. And I believe that they have followed direction of prior councils very well in doing what they can do to mitigate what all of us feel is a burden on our community. So, I wanted to start out by saying that. So, I will be supporting this ordinance, and yes, I, it's not, I believe in affordable housing, I believe in more housing, but I also don't believe that we are obligated to put it here. I'll just say it. So, but I will listen to my colleagues as well. So, Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate it. And I want to thank the staff. This is a very difficult and complex subject, and you're handling it very well. I appreciate it. So, I hope my council colleagues will share my disbelief and outrage of the state literally redlining our building codes in an egregious and cynical overreach. Why cynical? If the state really wants to build affordable housing, then they should first promote new housing where it can be built affordably. Instead, developers contribute to the campaigns of Sacramento politicians who will rewrite local zoning ordinances to favor the developers at all stages of development. I have here an article about Scott Wiener, who has been a big proponent and creator of these laws, how much money he's taken from developers in the state of California and those who are associated with development, lawyers and contractors and the like. It's very eye-opening, I'll be happy to send it to anybody, and it's available out there on the, on the internet. The politicians bypass local planning commissions and city councils, as we've learned tonight. They bypass environmental reports that were required before. They bypass traffic studies, which traffic is a huge contributor to quality of life. Why build it if you're going to be stuck in traffic? Even the people who might be living in those new units, new units. They bypass parking requirements. Most of you probably have issues on your blocks with parking. Those who are going to be near these new multifamily units, just go down Culver Boulevard after nine o'clock, when everybody's back in all those big apartment buildings. They didn't provide parking allowances for those buildings, they're going to be all over the streets everywhere. And the politicians have this big fantasy that, oh, people will just have to get out of their cars. Well, even our own South Bay Council of Governments did a study of affordable housing and what people do for parking, and they said that 95% of the people who live in affordable housing still have cars. So, they're not getting rid of cars. And they also have a significant problem with the public transportation. So, they bypass parking requirements. Most developers do not rush to develop in less desirable areas. They want the much higher market rents in more desirable areas to maximize their bottom-line profits. Sacramento politicians have given away the very zoning which make our community sensible, thoughtfully balanced, and livable. They entice developers to build by offering density incentives. Sacramento is constantly and ironically counting on public transportation, which I just mentioned, which have many issues to eliminate the need for cars, thus reduce parking requirements, but it's not so. And I am not against all affordable housing, it just needs to be built where it's affordable. For example, a 200-unit multifamily project in Manhattan Beach would yield perhaps 30 to 35 affordable housing, low-income units. The remainder would be at very high market rates, thus ensuring bigger profits than building the standard number of allowable units without our current zoning levels. The same amount of money spent in Manhattan Beach could build double to triple the amount of units in a less-developed area. Those 400 to 600 units could provide double to triple the amount of affordable housing units from 90 to 120. The remaining units should be provided at what's referred to as workforce wages and rates, and they would be closer to the manufacturing, distribution, and other jobs that could more easily support a family. An excellent example of this density bonus development done right, and that makes sense, is a new one in Baldwin Hills, just 12 miles east of Manhattan Beach. I encourage you to look it up, just Google Baldwin Hills Costco. It's going to be 800 units on top of a Costco store. The Costco store itself is going to provide 400 jobs, and it's also going to eliminate a food desert. In other words, people will be able to shop right there and get fresh produce and the things they need. And this is built on the five-acre site of a bankrupt community hospital. More affordable places, you can produce more affordable housing. And that's where I mentioned before, the Sacramento politicians are cynical, they're playing to the tune of their donors, the donors are developers. Please look at that and make the decision, and make your decision on who you're voting for and sending to Sacramento. You mentioned Ben Allen, he was just interviewed in Easy Reader. He's so concerned about our housing, he said, "I don't think I voted for that bill that created the mechanism."
He didn't?
He didn't. Why not? If it's important to him, why didn't? Why didn't he, why didn't he vote?
There was a mechanism that we're rallying against. He didn't vote, he didn't vote for this.
Yes, no, he didn't vote, period, on this issue.
Okay, that's, all right.
I mean, his words. Okay? Happy to go to bat for Manhattan Beach. What's he going to do? He's out in less than two years, 2026, and then he's got his sights set on the state treasurer. I don't know what he's going to do. Why didn't he do it in the first place?
Do what?
If it was such a concern. Fight for not getting it passed.
You know, well, I don't want to.
Well, it's a political decision, you got to talk about Sacramento politics. Okay?
You don't have to, Joe.
Well.
You don't, because we have a decision.
Okay, my comments, please, can I just finish?
I wish you would finish.
It's not, it's not a debate.
No, it's not a debate.
We'll talk about it later.
Let's, let's keep it going.
Okay. So, Baldwin Hills, Costco, look it up. So, okay, so there are plenty examples of cities along the south coast, along the South Bay coast, which demonstrate the effects of the greed of both the developers and the politicians who accept their contributions and do their bidding. Let's not be one of them. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Proton Lesser, do you have comments?
I'm frustrated. We had a housing crisis in our region, let alone our state, before the fires that we recently experienced. I support the creation of more housing. I understand why we have these housing laws, because many communities did not entitle housing fast enough, raised obstacles, obstacles to development, and basically said, "Not in our backyard." I'm sympathetic to that, I think many of us are. But this set of revisions to our municipal code follows an idea of one-size-fits-all. The idea is that our jurisdiction, like every other jurisdiction, is required to adopt amendments that remove our local input. Residents, do you want to have a say in some of these large projects that are going to come? Thank you for your input, but it doesn't matter. The amendments we're adopting or being asked to adopt tonight are significant for our community. They are going to result in larger projects, they are going to change the character of our community, but we don't have a choice. I was asked, we were asked by a resident to state our position on the record. It's that I support creation of new housing, but not like this. We have no choice, however. We have no choice because the state Housing and Community Development Office can recertify our housing element. That's been mentioned in passing, but I think many residents don't appreciate what that would mean. It would mean you want a building permit? You can't get it from our city. Our city hall will be standing here as an edifice, but you're going to need to go to the state. This is not a hypothetical, this actually has happened in other jurisdictions, and this is exactly what happened until that city became in compliance with their housing law.
Right.
The city can lose their permitting authority, we would face builders' remedy projects, which were mentioned earlier. These are projects that don't even have to abide to the more liberal standards of development and scale that this process will allow. They'll be even larger. We have a litigation risk that's been mentioned only in passing. Developers can sue and recoup attorney's fees. Third-party organizations that are watching jurisdictions like us, some of the wording that we're using as we discuss this are based on the fact that our words will be used in complaints, and our lines will be used to suggest that we're not in favor of new housing. That is not true. We support housing. However, these third-party organizations can use parts of what we say, and they will be entitled to bring suit, and they will be able to collect attorney's fees. The Attorney General's Office has a division that is dedicated, focused on cities that are not enacting their housing element responsibilities. I do support the process of working with our state legislators who want to try and help us. I don't think it's productive to be critical of our state legislators that are trying to help us. One could argue that it's too late, that it's too little. The problem is, the majority of voters in this state believe that there is a housing crisis, the majority of legislators believe that communities like ours have not done their share to meet the burden, and as a result, we are being forced to move forward with this item tonight. So, on that basis, I am prepared to move forward with it, but it is with deep concern about how this is going to change our community. I love our community, been here for almost 30 years. This, I served, I had the privilege of serving on a planning commission for six years, going through the process. We benefited in developing our community based on public input and following state standards through a use permit process where there was the ability to appeal. I have tremendous confidence in our city staff to apply these objective standards, but I regret that we're being forced to adopt this change.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm going to call on my colleague, Councilmember Sherrillian, I just want to say, you said all that so well, thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate those comments as well. Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't know if it needs to be part of the motion, but just emphasizing that, you know, we are the voice of our residents and the residents, you know, to move forward with some kind of petition or letter to our state legislators. I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion, or it's a future agenda item, but I'd like for us to at least do that for our residents.
If I may, Madam Mayor, we are already working with the Legislative Ad Hoc Committee to get something to our legislators.
Is that something that council will get to see?
Absolutely, sure. And I think, the way I see it, it wouldn't necessarily be part of this motion, but if you'd like to put it in a record and make a second motion, or a third, wherever we are, do that, but let's do the others first. But I don't think it really belongs with the ordinance, okay? And absolutely, the legislative committee can bring, bring it back. So, all right. So, I think we've all stated for the record our opposition to how this is coming to us, and I do really appreciate how you said it, but I need someone to make the motion to introduce ordinance number 25-0004. And I'm going to do it with great fear of political suicide, but because it is actually the right things to do. Is there a second? It has been seconded by my colleague, Councilwoman Tournay.
Begrudgingly so.
Begrudgingly so.
So, here, I'll read the title of the ordinance.
Okay.
Ordinance number 25-0004. An ordinance of the city of Manhattan Beach amending Title 10 of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code in Chapter A of the Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Program to implement five programs outlined in the city's sixth-cycle housing element and adopting the second addendum to a previously adopted negative declaration.
Call for the question.
Motion passes, four to one.
Okay, thank you, and I just want to say again, before we adopt the resolution, do not let it be misinterpreted, misread, or miscommunicated that I am wholeheartedly in favor of this, but that this is what we have to do to meet the law. But I, I don't support it, if that makes sense. So, anyway, adopt resolution number 25-0028. So anyway, adopt resolution number 25 dash 0028. We have to do that too, right?
Yes, and that's just to forward the amendments to the Coastal Commission.
Oh, good. Okay, Councilwoman Attorney, thank you. Call for that question.
Motion passes four to one.
All right, so at this time-
Sorry, you're, you're-
Oh, yes, and I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Sorry. So, City Attorney, how can I articulate that motion? Just to bring it back to-
You can do it, yeah, I think, yeah, you can do it now, or you can do it at the future agenda items. I think it's just, go ahead and bring it back. The, the committee will bring back a report.
No, it's more than that.
I think it's more than that.
Okay.
I believe we can entertain a motion now.
Sure.
Can we not?
Yes, yes.
Related to this item.
Yeah, no, exactly. I, I want us to be able to petition and whatever the legislative committee puts forth that brings, comes to council.
Um, I would like to discuss it in public at council.
Great.
Because I, what I would want at that time is to hear from legal, does it open us up to some of those third-party lawsuits, right? That can, or any of that, but I'm generally supportive, but I want that opinion.
Fair.
Okay?
Withdraw it for now?
No, don't withdraw it. I don't wanna withdraw it, because he, I'm saying-
Subject to-
Have it, right, come to council for that full discussion.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Any comments? Call for the question.
Thank you. This is for a-
It's for a statue of Councilmember Franklin. And, no, it's for a petition to, for our residents that could sign, that would say, we, you know, opposing such ordinances, that, you know, such action by the state.
We support housing, but not this way.
Some sort of thing like that, so it would come back, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Motion passes five oh.
Okay.
And we have a new kiln.
And we have a new kiln, so we'll work on, we'll work on the statue, I promise you. So I would like to take a 10, at least a 10-minute break. Thank you very much, because we need it.
Thanks for your attention.
Take care.
Nice to see you. Okay, thank you. Got my list here. Do we ask our second assist friends when we can go live?
Can we go live?
We're live, Madam Mayor.
We are live, folks. Okay. Uh-oh, I lost my notes. Hey, we're moving on to item 12. General business. Consideration of a resolution approving the final construction drawings and specifications for 28th Street Stormwater Infiltration Project Director Lee. Hello.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. Tonight, Principal Civil Engineer Jeff Fialka will be giving our presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Council. Jeff Fialka, Principal Civil Engineer, here to discuss the 28th Street Stormwater Infiltration Project. To start out with a little bit of background, the city operates a municipal separate storm sewer system, otherwise known as MS4 system, which is essentially a network of storm drains entirely separate from our sewer system. We operate this system under a permit issued by the state, which is the LA County MS4 permit, and as such, we're required to comply with the permit requirements. A few of them are listed here on this slide. One of them is to prevent pollutants from entering the ocean, collect and test water samples at outfall locations, report test results to the state, and identify and implement projects to address exceedances of specified contaminants. Now, this last item listed here, this is performed by the Watershed Management Group, which is a collective of representatives from the cities of Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, Torrance, and the LA County Flood Control District. Collectively, they work together to put together the Watershed Management Program, which, as indicated on the slide, identifies projects to address contaminants in our stormwater Again, with some more background information here, the 28th Street storm drain is one single pipe, 72-inch pipe, that outlets to the ocean at approximately along the alignment of 28th Street, and this one drain drains over 60% of the land area of the city. So shown here on the slide with the red outline, we have the outline of the boundaries of the city of Manhattan Beach. The blue area is the drainage area that, again, exits the city and enters the ocean through this one pipe. The inset at the lower left shows you an image of what this outfall pipe looks like during a significant storm event. Actually, going back to that for a second, in addition to, as I mentioned, there's routine monitoring that is performed and reported to the state according to the permit. 20 years of data from the sampling and testing has shown that discharges from this 28th Street pipe routinely exceed the limits established by the state for the amount of bacteria that can contain in the stormwater. So to address these bacterial exceedances, the aforementioned Beach Cities Watershed Management Group included in their 2015 update to the Watershed Management Program a concept project that would collect the water from this 28th Street drain and infiltrate it so it doesn't enter the ocean. That was back in 2015, and that's essentially the genesis for the 28th Street project. Then in 2020, the city hired CWE, a civil design firm, to perform a study to locate potential sites that would be suitable for infiltration of the stormwater that's generated through that storm, the 28th Street drain. The most suitable location found as a result of that study was the parking lot at Bruce's Beach, otherwise known as the 26th Street Parking Facility. That was back in 2020 that the feasibility study was performed. In 2021, the city submitted multiple grant applications and was awarded, within the years following, over $30 million in grant funding to construct this concept project. In 2022, the city awarded a design contract to CWE to design the stormwater infiltration system, and then in 2024, just last year, City Council considered and adopted a SEQA environmental determination for the proposed project. And that determination was a mitigated negative declaration, meaning that any environmental impacts could be mitigated, and those impacts, per the findings of that study, would be impacts during construction and could be mitigated. So the system that's been designed by CWE will intercept the existing storm drain, which, again, passes under 28th Street. It'll intercept it at Manhattan Avenue and divert storm flows through a 60-inch pipe that would carry the water to an underground pump station located just south of 27th Street underneath Manhattan Avenue. That stormwater will then flow into sedimentation chamber and trash rack to remove trash, settle out sedimentation, and then be distributed to a field of 40 dry wells located both within the parking lot and at the base of the park in the grassy area just east of Manhattan So the actual infiltration will occur through what are called dry wells. This image on the left shows a cutaway section of a typical dry well. It's essentially a concrete chamber above a gravel-filled shaft, which allows the water to enter into the chamber. It's an open bottom to that shaft. Water percolates through and into the surrounding unsaturated soils. The image on the right is a schematic cross-section of where this water will be going once it enters the subsurface. So based on test data, the water will predominantly move in the downward direction until it encounters the water table. The actual start or the upper boundary of the infiltration will be approximately 15 to 20 feet below the ground surface. So some benefits to the project, in addition to regulatory compliance, the project will also improve water quality at the beach and in the bay, reduce discharges of bacteria, as I mentioned, as well as trash and debris, which will be collected in the trash capture system and sedimentation system. This will minimize potential for beach closures, enhance environment for marine life. We've already heard tonight some of the effects of pollutants, and those may be natural, but, you know, it doesn't take much to get marine life sick, as we can see with the doing on currently. It'll also create opportunities for education and outreach and improve the 26th Street Parking Facility. The parking lot itself, all of the perimeter retaining walls, will be replaced during construction. They are old, and some of them are failing in portions right now. It'll be fully reconstructed with the dry wells then installed within the parking lot. Construction timeline, realize that font's a little bit small. Essentially, the project is anticipated to take 14 to 16 months to construct. When the project is released for bid, bidders will be provided a preliminary schedule, and they'll be required to comply with the schedule or request modifications to either shorten durations, potentially resequence, phase work, but only, it'll be reviewed and approved by the city if it will have a benefit to the project and benefit to the city. In general, the work in Manhattan Avenue is expected to occur between July of 2025 and May of 2026, and the work within the parking lot between September of 2025 into August of 2026. So due to the depth of the existing storm drain pipe below 28th Street, some pretty significant, or rather, deep excavations will be required, both at the intersection of 28th Street and Manhattan Avenue, and also on the block of Manhattan Avenue between 26th and 27th Street, where, as I mentioned, the pump station and the sedimentation chamber and trash removal system will all be located. Because of the size of these systems, there will be some extended durations within Manhattan Avenue in those locations. The segment of Manhattan Avenue between 26th and 27th, we expect that to be closed for approximately six to nine months during construction. We will, the parking within that segment will be unavailable to the public. To help compensate for that, staff plans to restripe the segment of 27th Street between Manhattan Avenue and Highland, sorry, re-outline the parking spaces there, as well as the segment of Manhattan Avenue between 27th and 28th. That will provide a net gain of a couple spaces relative to what is lost only on the on-street parking for Manhattan Avenue. The 67 parking spaces within the 26th Street Parking Facility would be fully inaccessible to the public for the duration of the work in the parking lot. We have considered and looked at phasing the project, the amount of additional time and cost that it would involve for a nominal additional parking. We wouldn't even be able to keep half of it open, and there still would be some extended closure for the full parking lot, even with phasing. So at this time, we are not proposing to phase that portion of the work. However, there are, we are aware that there are residents that have overnight parking permits in this parking lot. Staff is currently working with the school district to see if we can offer parking spaces within Grand View Elementary Parking Lot to help offset, you know, some of the lost nighttime parking that had previously been available to nearby residents. In regards to public outreach, the city has held multiple outreach events over the last few years. This includes four community outreach events, two stakeholder meetings, two commission meetings, and a presentation to the Manhattan Beach City Council in May of last year, as I had mentioned. Each of these events were advertised through some combination of mailers, onsite signage, social media posts, on the city website, city newsletters, as well as postings at City Hall and the Beach Reporter, and announcements during City Hall meetings. City Council has previously taken action on this project nine times in the past, starting back in 2015. That was when the project, the initial concept for the project, was included in the Watershed Management Program. City Council authorized the submission of that program to the State Water Board. They then authorized an update to it in 2021. We awarded agreements for both the feasibility study and the design for the project in 2020 and then in 2022, and City Council authorized grant applications and approved transfer agreements with granting agencies in 2021 and 2022, and then most recently was City Council action adopting the mitigated negative declaration in May of last year. Some alternatives, if City Council opts not to move forward with the project as proposed and as designed, City Council can request modifications to the current project. However, any significant modifications are very likely to delay the project. Relocation of the project would almost certainly cancel out or forfeit our grant funding that's been awarded. Another alternative, City Council could completely abandon the current project. This, again, would forfeit grant funding. We would risk penalties from the Regional Water Board. We'd also be at risk for third-party lawsuits, and in addition to all that, we would still need to identify multiple separate projects that would provide the same benefit, meaning they would capture that same volume of stormwater to prevent the bacteria from entering the ocean. We anticipate that this would be significantly more costly and take a significant amount of time to complete. So the recommendations tonight for City Council are to adopt Resolution 25-0029 approving the final construction drawings and specifications, and authorizing the solicitation of competitive bids for the project. Second recommendation is to adopt Resolution 25-0030, authorizing a use and maintenance agreement with the County of Los Angeles for our connection. It would take place at 28th Street and Manhattan Avenue and allow us to construct the project. That concludes the present, the formal presentation. However, staff is available to answer questions. In addition, with our project team, in addition to city staff, we also have available Vik Bopna and Katie Harrell, both with CWE, the project design firm, as well as Chris Wessel with CW, with GeoSentek, and that's the firm that oversees the city's stormwater sampling and monitoring program. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, another example of what an excellent report. All right, are there questions for Jeff? Anybody? Anybody? Who's gonna go first? Mayor Pro Tem Lesser.
I'll jump in. Jeff, thank you for your presentation, but one piece, which I think needs to be emphasized a little bit more. This is not just a feel-good project. We are obligated to do this, correct?
This project will allow us to achieve compliance with stormwater regulations that are mandated by the state, which is implementing on behalf of the EPA, that are required, and we are currently out of compliance.
Okay. So you, let's just, can you articulate that a little bit more? Because, again, I think we've explained the benefits of this project. We've explained how, and you haven't said, but I think I know, that was it 99% of the storm flow through this pipe is coming from the city of Manhattan Beach. Is that correct?
That is correct. Over 99% of the drainage area that drains through this pipe is coming from the city of Manhattan Beach. It is our stormwater. It is our responsibility to keep it clean and within the required measurements of bacteria. And I mentioned early on, I didn't go into specific details, but 20 years of data has shown that when there are storms, there is bacteria-laden stormwater that enters and causes us to exceed the limits established by the state.
Limits required by the state, and we're required to undertake a project of this scale, this being one of the largest projects in our city, decades.
We are required to treat or eliminate that water from entering the ocean. It could be achieved through multiple projects. Here, we have an opportunity to do it with one large project.
Let me ask the city attorney a question. There was a recent Supreme Court decision, City and County of San Francisco versus the Environmental Protection Agency, which had to do with a permit for that jurisdiction. I believe the Supreme Court held, and I'll let you describe the holding if you could, held that the city of San Francisco did not need to comply with its permit obligations. How does this case here, how does this project differ?
Yeah, we're familiar with the recent San Francisco case. My firm partner is a member of the California Stormwater Quality Association, and they've been analyzing that issue, and they're gonna have some public meetings on that topic. To date, the Supreme Court's decision does not have any significant impact on our situation on permit compliance.
Let me ask a question about trying to mitigate the impact of the construction on adjacent neighbors. At a minimum, there's an issue, obviously, with construction noise and sound, but also parking. Can you describe how staff has sought to try and address those issues that are gonna impact these neighbors for a minimum of, what, 16, 18 months?
Yes. So as I indicated, the on-street parking will be able to offset that, but really, the larger loss of parking is in the parking lot. We have had multiple discussions with the city traffic engineer to brainstorm potential solutions to that. We simply don't have the land available to create parking spaces near this site. So our options would be to look at ways to change the regulations or to use differently the parking that is available. But we are constrained in that aspect in the sense that we cannot simply implement whatever parking permit program we want due to the oversight of the Coastal Commission in this area.
This type of treatment with dry wells is, can you describe how confident we are that this is going to work to take the load of bacteria that is entering through the storm drain?
I mean, essentially, the concept is that that bacteria will not be entering the ocean as it currently does. It'll be diverted into the ground, into the unsaturated portion of soil above the groundwater table, and it has been shown for decades that microbes within the soil do a very good job of breaking down bacteria.
Okay. I'll stop here. I see other councilmembers have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Attorney.
Thank you for the excellent presentation. I just have a few questions. Can you share with us how many days we were not in compliance in, kind of, on average, the last few years, and what that means?
Yes. So during wet weather days, there's different regulations for if it's what's considered by the state a wet weather day. Wet weather is when there is an active storm or within three days after the completion of that rain event. We're allowed to have 17 days within a year where we, 17 wet weather days, that we can exceed the limits that are established for bacteria. So anything over 17 would be a violation, an 18th day, a 19th day, and so forth. So of the last 20 years, we've been monitoring since 2005, we would have, we've had, we've exceeded the 17 allowable days in 10 of those 20 years. And the number of exceedance days ranges from anywhere from four days above the 17 to about 20 days over that 17 allowable.
And then, I know that you all considered other sites where we can do this type of filtration. Can you share why you picked this location over the other locations?
So this site was recommended in the feasibility report that was prepared by CWE over the other sites. One of the primary reasons, the other sites that were looked at was an infiltration system actually on the beach, as well as a system at Polywog Park. Polywog Park, they did infiltration testing at all of these locations. The infiltration rates at Polywog are not suitable to a large infiltration project, meaning the water wouldn't move into the soil fast enough in the volume that we needed to. Another downside of Polywog Park is it is so far upstream of all of these other inlets that feed into 28th Street. So we wouldn't be able to capture a large portion of the 28th Street drainage area with a site that's that far inland. On the beach, some, one of the primary complicating factors on the beach is the groundwater table is very close to the beach surface, so you don't have much vertical room to infiltrate. And if you, there are requirements on minimum separation between the water table and your infiltration facilities. We wouldn't be able to meet there maybe at all, or if we were able to, potentially with a very large footprint, and that would involve essentially constructing a large project on the beach sand, which was perceived as an issue as well.
Okay. Sorry, just bear with me. Couple more questions. If we were to decide to forfeit this project at this time, and would, would we lose all the funding? Would there be other available funding if we were to examine other locations, other projects?
We would have to identify and apply to other ground programs, or we could reapply to some of the ones that already provided funding, specifically with the Safe Clean Water Program, which is providing over half of that funding, over $17 million. We were one of the early applicants because the project, that program just started a few years ago, and they are not awarding, they're not granting awards anywhere near of the size of what we received, being an early applicant to that program. There are grant programs out there, but you, they're generally awarding $5 million or less.
And then, I think this will be my last question, is, so if we were to forfeit, would we then go back to examining the other two locations that were identified, or there, or would we start the exercise all over again?
Those other two locations were essentially ruled out for the reasons I mentioned. We would likely have to plan out numerous other projects in order to collect the stormwater that needs to be, you know, removed from the drainage system before entering the ocean. We would also have to very likely pay back the money we have already spent on design, which is approximately $1 million, to the Safe Clean Water Program.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Councilmember Franklin.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi. Thank you. Nice report. I also want to compliment your team on the presentations to the public. I went to all of them, I think all of them, and they were very informative. Let's see, has, has anything changed in the design over the last, you know, six months or years? There's some, some talk about the diversion water pipe was gonna go originally along ocean, and now it's on Manhattan Avenue, or?
There haven't been any significant changes in the last six months or year, and actually, no significant changes since the start of the design. There, the feasibility study was focused on the location for the infiltration, so it did show the infiltration taking place at the 26th Street Parking Facility. It had been proposed at the time in the concept that was put forth in the, in the feasibility It had been proposed at the time in the concept that was put forth in the feasibility study to divert off of that pipe, the 28th Street pipe at Ocean as opposed to Manhattan Avenue. Once we got into design, we saw that there was multiple benefits to diverting from Manhattan Avenue as opposed to Ocean.
Okay, so I guess the same study was done on Manhattan Avenue?
No, because the study was for the infiltration. The study, there's no study performed for the connection to the existing storm drain.
Okay. All right. So going back to your slide that shows the gravel and the microbes, it would be slide six?
Schematic?
If you would please, yeah.
Yes.
So the hole is dug out, and then the machinery is put in, I'm layman's terms here, and then it's filled with gravel, and then do the microbes reside on the gravel? Or is it used for getting the water down low enough to get into the dirt with the microbes?
It's the latter. So the intent of the gravel-filled shaft is to quickly move this column of water so that it's in contact with the surrounding soils. So the water, the water will rather rapidly fill the gravel-filled shaft and then move both laterally through the sidewalls of it and through the bottom of it, and then want to move down due to gravity. The microbes are present in all soil in the trillions in a cubic foot of soil.
Okay, and so they don't have to be refreshed? They don't have to be flushed? They don't have to?
No, they're naturally.
They do their job, they eat and eat some more and eat more?
Not a microbiologist is a disclaimer, but generally that's how it works, yes.
All right. No, it's just fascinating that, the whole thing. To that end, we had discussed in those meetings that at some point, the water flow coming from the storm, water coming in, would be too much based upon, I don't know what, like the amount of water that's already been passed over the field or, you know, and so it gets diverted directly into the ocean. And how often might that happen, given the last decade of storms or?
So it's not technically being diverted to the ocean. It would just continue along its path to the ocean, and it would not be diverted to our systems. You are correct. The system has a design volume, which is 67 acre feet. If we were, which equates to roughly a one-inch storm within the city. If we were to get a six-inch storm over 24 hours, there will be instrumentation throughout the system within a set of these dry wells and in some of the distribution pipes, pump station location, you know, which will identify how full these dry wells are getting, and then we can close off the gate. The water will continue out to the ocean.
Okay, so contaminated water would go to the ocean?
Yes, I mean, generally what's found is what they call the first flush. So when there is a storm, it's that first amount of water that hits the streets because bacteria is largely coming from items that are on the street. So after you essentially rinse it off, the most bacteria-laden water is going to be in the first flush. There still likely will be bacteria in storm flows beyond that. So there will be, when we exceed the volume of the system, stormwater with bacteria will enter the ocean, but it's going to be less than it was.
Okay.
And it's sized to keep us.
So we got a better chance of making the 17 days?
Yes, and based on the analyses performed, we believe that the system would keep us in compliance.
I can't even believe I know that now.
Very impressed.
Yes. Okay. Another question I have is, when you're going down and you're drilling down, and then the water goes ahead and makes it through the filtering process through the dirt, okay? If I were to take a slice of it from the side and look at, okay, up, up at the top is, you know, Highland, and then you come down the park, and then you go over Manhattan Avenue, and then you go over Ocean, and then you go, and, and, and there's the parking lot. So from that parking lot where those wells are, down to the beach, you know, I don't know if you want to use a mean average of the beach, how many feet is that? And is that, is that below or above where all this activity is coming out, the fluted on that diagram that's up there now?
So those red lines are indicative of the ground surface at portions of the site. So right above where we've got the schematic of those two water columns, that is the upper tier parking lot, which is approximately at elevation 75. The infiltration well will be drilled down to elevation 22. And as I mentioned, the infiltration doesn't start till depth of about 15 to 20 feet below ground surface. So the top of that water column is, if I can read it correctly, approximately elevation 48.
Okay, and that's where it starts?
At that location. It is higher as you go to the east and lower elevation as you go to the west end of the lower tier.
Okay, because just, you know, any probability of it flowing, you know, one of my favorite lines from Jurassic Park is life will find a way. I mean, will it ever find a way to get itself to the beach and be on the surface?
The geotechnical studies that were performed indicate that based on the infiltration rate, the water is, favors the downward direction significantly. So what's shown here is even if it went two to one, even if it went, this is exaggerated in the vertical direction, so it doesn't appear that way. But even if the water was going down two feet and over one foot, it still stays some distance away from any what they call free face or edge that would allow flow out of it. Water is quite a distance from coming out, you know, just onto Ocean or onto the beach.
And then does it go down and, you know, does it mix with the seawater down below somewhere?
There is.
Brackish, you know, kind of?
There, it is brackish water down there because it's the interface of the ocean water and freshwater aquifer. So it is a brackish water below this site. Yes, ultimately it will enter the water table. And quite literally, it would be a drop in the bucket. You're talking about entering a water body that's connected within a few hundred yards to the Pacific Ocean. So it's not going to raise the surface elevation to any measurable degree of the water table.
But it doesn't enter any aquifer or anything that we're going and drawing?
No, we're actually, this project is taking place outside of the aquifer protection barrier that's in this location, kind of, I believe along the greenbelt, where they're injecting water to protect the freshwater that would be inland of there. So we're in a brackish, essentially unusable water area. In fact, this actually helps to some very small degree, build that barrier of the saltwater intruding into our freshwater aquifer. But it's only a, you know, temporal, it's not injecting continuously.
And does our staff get paid any, you know, does their time, do we get compensated from the grant dollars, you know, the work that our staff has done on it?
Yes, so one of the grant programs, the Safe Clean Water one, does allow us to claim staff time as project management time against the grant.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple more quick ones, please. So I'm just a little concerned, having gone through a couple of major projects, the Peck Reservoir and even Firehouse, you know, number, number two, and as Mayor Protem mentioned, this is the most expensive and the largest undertaking, you know, in the city. The ongoing costs, you know, we're always say, hey, we're at the ocean, you know, that's really hard on machinery. When do you think is going to be the time that we're going to have to replace any of this equipment and what might be the annual maintenance?
So the design life of the system, or at least the major stormwater components, is 50 years. The mechanical components are likely to need replacement probably in about half that time. The estimated cost, annual cost to maintain the system for just maintenance and operation, not large-scale overhaul of the system, is on the order of $150,000 a year, as estimated by our design engineer.
Okay, on a $30 million project?
Essentially, the ongoing maintenance is removal of the trash and debris from that trash capture device, the electricity to run the pumps, but keep in mind, these are only running when there's stormwater flowing into the system.
Right, right, okay. So we talked about the pollution grades. They would virtually go to zero in terms of, we would be getting straight A's? We'd be getting straight A's or, or at least enough at the end of the year, they're going to be mostly A, maybe some Bs?
We anticipate to see a marked improvement. If we had smaller storms that, you know, could, the system would entirely capture the storm, we would expect those grades to go to A. If we had a wet season where we have back-to-back very significant storm events, where we're still having a lot of runoff run into the ocean, you know, we may not be an A, but again, we would see an improvement over where we're at right now. And I should mention that, you know, the grade that's, the report card that's provided by Heel the Bay in their most recent year that was analyzed, which ended last year, this storm drain has a grade, or this beach, the 28th Street in Manhattan Beach, received a grade of D, as in dog. And, you know, all the way along the West Coast for that same time period during wet weather, 80% of the beaches have an A or a B. And the majority of surrounding beaches have an A. So there is a marked difference at this location.
Okay. And that was any influence from any beaches upstream, downstream? Because there's currents there.
Dockweiler has an A. 26th Street and Hermosa Beach has an A. Venice has an A. 26th, or Strand in Santa Monica has an A.
So it didn't help us?
Yeah, okay. All right. You know, I'm just, it's like a child, you want them to improve, you know?
Well, yeah, from a D, I mean, this community's not really a D community.
That's right, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sherrillian.
Thank you. Again, well done, Jeff, on that very complex topic. Couple of questions for you and a question for our traffic engineer. Joe asked about the long-term financial responsibilities of the city, and you answered that. Question is, the top portion of this build, is that going to be pervious pavement to absorb the water?
Yes, in the parking lot.
Yeah, the parking lot.
Will be pervious concrete, similar to many other city-owned parking lots.
Right, right.
It's not taking in a significant, it's just draining the actual, the rainfall that falls on the lot itself, but it will be in pervious.
And that'll drain down into the catch basin?
That'll just drain immediately into the subsurface below the site.
Yeah.
You know, similar like the lot six, right over here.
El Porto, right?
Porto parking lot, the majority of that is pervious concrete.
Got it, okay. Got a question for the traffic engineer.
Hi, Eric.
Good evening.
Good evening. Quick question, so my numbers might be off from just gathering the information, but we have about 6,000 vehicles going north and south on Highland. If we close Manhattan Avenue, which is roughly about 1,000 traveling north and south, it's going to be a 15% increase to Highland potentially. How could a single-lane major thoroughfare take on an additional 15% vehicles per day, another 1,000 vehicles per day?
It's a very wise question. Not all of the traffic on Manhattan Avenue will be diverted to Highland Avenue. What'll happen is that we have a circulation plan so that northbound traffic can go and be diverted to Ocean Avenue or Ocean Drive, and then southbound traffic would then be diverted to Highland Avenue. Yes, Highland Avenue will see an increase in traffic. What ends up happening is that you end up squeezing the balloon, if you will, and, and people find different ways to get where they need to go. The, there may be turn restrictions coming out of 26th Street or 27th Street so that you can still maintain that traffic flow, you don't, not turning left per se and holding back traffic behind you. You'd be required to make a right turn there. So.
Yeah, no, just, I'm just, you know, curious because, you know, Jeff mentioned the number of public meetings they had, and very few people attended those, from what I understand. You know, this kind of is a big deal for that footprint of community and residents. I'm just concerned that, I hear what you're saying, is, you know, people find a way around it, but Highland is already, you know, impacted with vehicles, and it is already backed up. So even if you add 100 or 200 more vehicles, it's, what's the intention of, our phone's ringing off the hook when this project's happening because people maybe didn't come to those public meetings and don't know about it until you shut down Manhattan Avenue? Have we tested to shut down Manhattan Avenue for a couple of days to see what it would actually do to Highland before we get the phone calls?
We haven't done that, but we will respond as we need to, to those kinds of traffic fluctuations. What'll happen with the neighborhoods both north and south of this project site is that generally they'll be, being served by, by streets that are north and south of the project site. So they'll return back out towards Rosecrans, or they'll return back out towards Marine Avenue, instead of trying to go towards Bruce's Beach. And so you'll see some relief that way. So this traffic gets dissipated through all, all of the streets. Yes, all of the streets will be impacted as well.
Kind of like pervious pavement.
Kind of like that. Good analogy.
Oh, you were waiting for that.
Yeah, you set me up. But thank you. Real quick question for Jeff, my final one, real quick. So the timeline, you know, looking at your timeline, your Gantt chart, you know, two years is a long time, you know, 18 months, 16 months for that site. That footprint is a long time, is, what assurances can we have? I know it's tough for you to say because you don't have a crystal ball with all the, you know, delays in construction material and all those type of things. I don't want this to turn into a, you know, it's already almost a four, five, six years of, you know, process, so can you elaborate a little bit on that?
You're talking like assurances during construction that it's not held up?
Yeah.
Or, you know, I mean, the contract will have liquidated damages, which will keep the contractor to their set number of working days that are allowable. So there are some significant costs that start to accrue if a contractor goes beyond what's included in their contract. You know, if there was an issue related to something becoming unavailable, we generally receive that information in advance and plan the construction accordingly. I mean, we, I can't foresee a situation where we'd have a giant excavation and then understand that the concrete vault is going to be a six-month delay. We simply wouldn't open up the street ahead of that. That's not to say nothing unforeseen could happen, but we do our best to plan around it. And, you know, we could close the street back up if something, you know, there are opportunities to pause the project and reopen it to, you know, mitigate the inconveniences to the traveling public and the residents as well in those circumstances.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Turney.
Yes, thank you. I know that parking is going to be a huge concern for our residents. After the completion of this project, will we gain any parking spots once we permanently reinstall that parking lot or lose any? Is that?
It is, we do have the design engineer on the line. It's either a net gain or loss of one or two parking spaces because in addition, with all these improvements, we will be bringing the parking lot fully up to all current codes, which have ADA requirements that are in excess of what's currently there. So we're going to have van-accessible spaces with the proper access aisle. We've done everything we can to squeeze in as many parking spaces as possible. We did pick up a little bit as far as the parking lot space because we're eliminating the staircase that currently runs in between the upper and lower tier and the lower tier down to Ocean, which allows us to gain a little bit more room there. But again, the net change, I don't remember if it's like one or two up or down from where we're at today, but it's like Eric has some additional input there.
Traffic engineer might have an answer for that and is dying to tell us.
Maybe I might have some additional information. With regard to the net parking spaces after the project is completed, we're looking at trying to capture a few extra parking spaces along the street, along Manhattan Avenue, along 27th Street, maintaining or maybe increasing a parking spot on, on Ocean Drive because we don't have the staircase anymore. So we can probably add between five and 10 more parking spaces than we have there today in total. There will be less in the parking lot itself because of what Jeff mentioned. There will be three to four part, new handicap parking spaces that were never there before. There will be EV charging locations that were never there before. But by doing that, we lose a couple of parking spaces that were there before, and we'll recover that on the street.
Okay, and then please answer this question regarding how we deal with this traffic during the construction. I know we're going to lose that parking, and you're examining, using the Grandview parking lot and perhaps El Porto. Have we considered implementing a shuttle service for our residents in order to accommodate those, those movements?
Between now and construction, we are going to be considering a lot of different options. We know that there's going to be a big impact because we're going to lose 68 parking spaces in the parking lot. In addition, during certain times- In addition, during certain times of the construction site, construction phasing, we'll be losing some parking along the street sides, too. We're going to look at multiple ways of trying to recapture some parking, as Jeff mentioned as well. There aren't new parking spaces to be had, and so what do you do with them? Maybe we relocate some of that overnight parking into the Grandview Elementary School. Maybe we repurpose some of this beach parking in the El Porto lot. Maybe we remove the street sweeping restrictions on some of the streets that you don't have to move your car on street sweeping day. Those kinds of things, to try to, in lots of little ways, try to minimize that impact.
And are you aware of any funding sources that would pay for some of these accommodations that we would have to make for?
Not in the timeframe that we're talking about, no.
Thank you.
Great, Tom.
Oops, go ahead.
Eric? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So there's a big retaining wall, right, on the west side of the parking lots, right?
Yes.
Between the lifeguard station. Is that going to be taken out and redone?
So that retaining wall will be taken out, replaced, reconstructed, and put back in place.
Okay, great. And then, and then this might be for the chief, is there going to be any enhanced enforcement? I mean, this is going to be a very difficult place to be going through, and there's going to be frustrated drivers and the like. Are we anticipating any kind of enforcement in that area, extra enforcement?
Thanks for the question. We currently provide a lot of enforcement in that area already due to a number of competing construction projects in the area. And year-to-date, we've written about 152 tickets in that area already. And so it's an area of focus for us now. We are aware that this project is coming online soon, or could be coming along online soon. And it will continue to remain an area of focus for us in terms of enforcement, just to try to gain as much compliance as we can with the parking regulations, even as they shift.
Okay. How about something to kind of like, keep the traffic moving, you know? So there's a signal at 33rd Street in Highland. And I imagine with the diversion, diverted traffic, you know, it may just keep backing up onto Ocean Drive or Manhattan Avenue. You know, and there might be a long string of cars trying to get through there.
Yes, sir.
Would you post a CSO there, Community Service Officer or something, if, you know, on commute days so that we don't have these frustrated drivers?
Well, one of the things that frustrates drivers, and I'll defer to the traffic engineer for his expertise because this is certainly more his expertise than mine. But one of the things I'll say from my side of the street on this is that there's, volume is volume. And if there's nowhere for people to go, there's nowhere for them to go, whether you hand-direct, whether you, whether you lengthen the phase and things like that. And so there's a finite amount of success you can have with someone hand-directing traffic when you're trying to push them in one place that has a high volume of traffic to another place. And so I would defer to the traffic engineer, Mr. Zandbly, on whether or not a flagman or another person who would direct traffic would be helpful in this regard. Or if, just examining our phasing right now and trying to do what we can to ensure the phasing works as well as we can to move the traffic along in a synchronized manner, might be more appropriate than having a live human trying to do it all the time.
Well, not all the time, but just.
There is current construction. Go ahead.
There will be multiple phases to the construction project, whether you're working on 28th Street or Manhattan Avenue or on Ocean. And so traffic circulation will move around a little bit. With each phase of the project, there will be a detailed traffic control plan to help move that traffic around the project. Some of our most constrained locations are traffic signals because you have to spend time in opposite directions with the green lights. And so we'll do our best to coordinate those traffic signals to kind of keep that traffic flow moving. We have that ability to do that with some of our signal timing. At certain times, if certain intersections we see are getting congested, we can restrict the turns to certain directions that help move that flow out and about. We can do public service announcements to the neighborhoods and to the general public in general to say, here's the circulation pattern, here's how you can get around this, or here's where you need to get to go. We could also contact places like Waze and Caltrans and have that posted on their website so that your apps are shown how you can get around these constraints.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, can you state, I just have a follow-up question, so sorry.
No, this is great. No, these are great questions.
So this is a huge project, and we have a few other huge projects going on around town. I live on the north end of town, so High Rose is a big area of construction concern. And then there, we have some work that's going along Rosecrans on the south side of the street as well. Will efforts be made to coordinate all of these projects so that we can ensure that people aren't getting blocked at every turn that they make?
Yes, absolutely, and that'll be a coordinated effort between traffic engineering, our contractors, and our building division, as well as our police department as well, and code enforcement. We will probably start putting a harder constraint on our contractors that are working in the city about where and when they can park in, as related to the construction phase, the construction of homes, right? And then staging the public utilities, which is a lot of the work that's on the streets that happen, gas and electric and all the rest of that, to coordinate what time window they're going to be allowed to have.
Thank you.
All right, are there other questions for either our traffic engineer or project engineer? Anyone, before I turn it over to the public? Okay, with that, I'm going to open it up for public comments. You will be given three minutes. Please come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Hoerth, Mayor Potem Lesser, council members and staff. My name is Craig Hadwallader, and I'm here really under two capacities as the policy coordinator for the Surf Rider Foundation's South Bay chapter. And I've been involved with the chapter since 2002, so it's been 23 years. I'm also Chair of the Safe Clean Water Program, South Santa Monica Bay Watershed Area Steering Committee. And for the first two years, I was Vice Chair. In the last three years, I've been Chair, voted by the committee. And I was appointed to this position and reappointed by LA County Supervisor Hawn. This is one of my favorite programs. I brag about it everywhere when I get to go to another county. I said, you guys need a Measure W program. And over two-thirds of the residents voted to tax themselves 2.5 cents per square foot of impermeable surfaces, and that's where the money for this program's coming from. I was a major cheerleader for this project. It's one of my favorites, and I have a long history with that area, including the Leadership Manhattan Beach class of 2003. And this is very useful for keeping a clean, healthy ocean and beach. In fact, I would fight to live, I would fight to have this project if I lived in the project area. So we know that you'll have cleaner water, cleaner beaches, better property values, a better quality of life. The short-term inconvenience, I think, is more than offset by the long-term of this project. And this will be the cleanest water and beach anywhere in Manhattan Beach. Surf Rider tests five different locations, and this drains 60% of the city of Manhattan Beach, which we would like. And the Safe Clean Water Program voted to fund $17.6 million for this project. And we strongly recommend that the council go ahead with both resolutions. And this is a great project.
Thank you, Craig.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Thank you all for listening to me tonight. I'm so excited to speak about this project because it's one of the most exciting projects we've had in the South Bay since I've been here. Imagine, in the near future, being able to tell people, it's safe to go play in the sand, it's safe to go play in the water, you won't catch a bacterial infection and get sick or die, you won't be exposed to other contaminants, you won't have to swim and play in trash. All of this came from a beach cleanup just south of here. This is what we want to prevent, and this project will do both of those things at the same time. Oh, my name is Mary Simon, by the way. I'm with Surf Rider Foundation, and I'm with the South Bay chapter. And I run, I'm the coordinator of the Blue Water Task Force program called Teach and Test. And I teach middle and high school students how to monitor the water for Enterococcus bacteria, which is a fecal indicator. Ew, disgusting. And these wonderful young people come out on Sundays, they collect water samples, as Craig said, from five sites in Manhattan Beach, but all the way up from the wetlands, all the way down through the tip of Palos Verdes. And we take those back to our lab, and the students process them, and they learn how to become scientists. We have students now in university majoring in engineering. We have one in nursing school, and that's because they were able to participate in authentic science. Our goal is to try to clean up the water. We want to improve the water quality. We want to make this a magnet for people so they can point to this area and say, look what we're able to do when we put our hearts and minds into it. And this will help not just the people and the residents, it'll bring tourists in, it'll help the wildlife as well. And we want, as Craig said, healthy waters, healthy beaches for the whole planet. We can be a model for that here in Manhattan Beach, which is super exciting. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. And I will leave some more information on plastics with you. And may I leave that with you here?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A visual.
Yeah, that was a visual, okay.
I didn't know I was going to have to follow Mary. She's in advance. My name is Tom Ford. I am the CEO of the Bay Foundation, also the Director of the Santa Monica Bay National Estuary Program. Just want to start firstly by thanking the city for its longstanding support with our work with you and your community to get those sand dunes revegetated to those native vegetation that's out there, attracted endangered El Segundo blue butterflies and the city's state, the city flower, the primrose is now all over the beach out there as a result of that. Prior to my involvement in that project, I'm a resident of the city of Santa Monica. I served for eight years on the Clean Beaches, Clean Ocean Task Force there, chaired that for a little while. And throughout my decades of work here in the Los Angeles region, focused on stormwater projects to clean up the stormwater going to our beaches. And you've heard an abundance of information today as to why it's important to clean those up. Long story short, support this project. Happy to help with any of the knowledge that we might be able to share or to help promulgate the information about this project and celebrate what this investment's going to do for your community. We currently run our volunteer events out of that parking lot. We're going to be impacted, we'll figure it out. I'm sure our volunteers will figure it out. My boys' hearts are going to be broken knowing that we can't park down there as easily as we used to, but we'll manage because they have come to appreciate the sacrifices that we know we have to make as a community to make these types of improvements. And Jeff, I just want to say that was a stellar presentation. I've sat through a lot of city council member, city council meetings, not as many as y'all, I'm sure, but I really thought that was impressive. And I wish you luck with this project. And again, if we can be of any help, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the shout-out to staff. You do work hard. Other people speaking? Okay, if there's no more public comments in chambers, I turn to Zoom.
We have James.
Okay. James?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. First of all, pardon my voice if I look cold, but first of all, to Jeff and Katie and the staff, this is an incredible, incredibly complex project over a very extended period of time. And I know you guys have put your heart and soul and passion into it, so I truly do appreciate what you've done in that regard. Having said that, though, I can tell you, I have been, over the past two decades, three decades, a supporter of a bunch of different groups, including Heald Bay, Surf Rider, Bologna Wetlands, the California State Parks, a number of organizations. So I believe environmental protection and looking out for what's right in that regard. But at the same time, I also am very concerned about facts. I'm also concerned about analysis. I'm also concerned about statements that are supported by true underlying documentation or actions. So there are a few things that I just have to comment on tonight. First of all, one of the comments is, we're not out of compliance. The city of Manhattan Beach is not out of compliance, not in '23, not in '22, not in '21. And in 2020, we're out of compliance by one day. So Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a fact. Second point I'd like to make is, there's nobody requiring that we do this project. As far as I can see, there's nothing in writing where someone says, you have to do this project. There are no fines that have been threatened in writing that I'm aware of. They've not been quantified. Again, facts, I'm trying to understand the facts of the situation, analyze it. And the facts say that is not as bad as what people are saying necessarily. In the last 10 years, just to give you a fact, in the past 10 years, we were allowed 170 exceedance days. We did 157, okay? In the past four years, we've been out of compliance one year by one day. So we're not sitting here with a terrible situation that the world's coming to an end. So I think it's very important that, instead of talking about parking and traffic, because look, if the project deserves to be done, we will all suck it up and live through the inconvenience because that's the right thing to do. But make sure the project should be supported. That's the baseline here. Thank you.
Thank you, James, and sorry, you're having a problem with your throat. Okay.
There's no additional request on Zoom.
Okay, all closed public comment. Okay, who wants to start us off? Council, or Mayor Potem Lesser?
If I may, I'd like to follow up on the last speaker's questions, and I'm not sure who is the appropriate staff member, but it would be starting with the question, is the city out of compliance? And I believe you've made some reference to the number of days that we were not in compliance, but can you clarify that?
Yes, the actual regulation where we have to comply with, the compliance deadline was for bacteria was July of last year. So even though we had exceedances in years prior to that, they were not, there were no violations issued because we were given an amount of time to comply. If you look at it over a period of 20 years, do we have fewer than 170 days? Sorry, 10 years, 170 days? Yes, but that's not how the regulations are written. So as the regulations are defined, had the compliance deadline been in effect, we would have been out of compliance. And we don't have the data for this current wet year to determine. But we are seeing bacteria levels trending upward. As I mentioned, we do have a representative here from the company that monitors our sampling and testing program if you have additional questions about what they're seeing in the readings over time. But we anticipate we will be out of compliance for this current wet year if we get enough rain. And the other years, as I mentioned, would be considered out of compliance had the deadline passed.
The second question was, is the city required to complete this project? I think you indicated during your presentation that if not this project, we would be required to explore others, and there was a feasibility study. But can you address that? Are we required to undertake a project or multiple projects to address what you indicated is a lack of compliance?
We are required to comply with the regulations. How we go about doing it is up to the city to decide. So it's kind of hard to answer that question.
And to the extent that the city does not comply, it would be subject to fines, is that right?
That is correct.
Let me stop.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, colleagues, others? What?
I have comments as well.
Well, we're at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, you may sit down.
I am weighing the questions that this last caller raised, asking fundamental questions. Is this project required? Do we need to proceed with this project? Also, how this goes about in filtering the stormwater, as well as the impacts on our residents that live there, as well as those traveling by. We've heard this is going to be a major project with impacts for a year and a half. But I'm weighing on the other side what we've been spending the last hour-plus on. weighing on the other side what we've been spending the last hour-plus on, if not more, and that is, this is our stormwater. Ninety-nine percent of it comes from our streets, it's our runoff. Our stormwater is contaminating the Santa Monica Bay. This is a grant-funded project, and based on this last engagement I had with staff, there are repercussions. We are subject to fines, and I assume litigation risk from other parties if we do not comply. And for that reason, I will be supporting the motion to move forward.
Would you like to make a motion? We may still discuss it.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, and I know we have some specialists here as well. I'm having a real hard time with this. I got involved with it certainly not as early as, you know, Mayor Protem Lesser, but I really dug into it. My answer, my question was simple, show me a project of this magnitude, somewhere that I could drive to, along the whole coast of California, I would pack a bag if I needed to, so I can see what it looks like and talk to the people there who have been living with it. No one, no one, nowhere. I don't know where, I don't know, maybe we have to look elsewhere, but we know that some of our sister cities, you know, our cities, adjacent cities, maybe don't have as big a magnitude of this, but they turned down a similar type of technology at the drywell and water over it and things like that. The fines, okay? You know, I know we wouldn't get the $30 million, and I know that there would be fines, but I just don't know how much of an examination was made for other types of solutions. The thing that concerns me, ongoing maintenance, there's a budget report in the public record here, shows $31 million we're gonna get and $31 million we're gonna spend. No allowances for ongoing maintenance in there. Every major capital project that has been conducted here in the city has had ongoing maintenance. I calculated the hundred, what was the estimate, I think $160,000? It's like a half of 1% for ongoing maintenance, and eventually, and what did we talk about? We're here at the ocean, we're here in salt air, machinery, things break down. Look at Lot Number Three, over wherever it is, and it, you know, and the rebar managed to get rusted because of the salt air. Now, some of this stuff is gonna be subterranean, but still the air is gonna get to this equipment. So that concerns me about, you know, the liability of, you know, future maintenance that's gonna be required and the like. The construction, look at the devastation that 76 or 72 parking spots lost to temporary outdoor dining did to our city. Did we survive? Sure, we did. And as some of the restaurant owners said, "People will find the parking." But can you imagine, you know, in the staff report, and even going to Grand View, the staff report said, "We'll give them permits to park in El Porto or at the pier." Well, how are you gonna ask, you know, families, older folks, you know, to schlep the mile? It's a mile from the pier, it's, you know, nine-tenths of a mile, no, I'm sorry, the other way around, nine-tenths of a mile from the pier and a mile from El Porto, to park your car and then walk, walk home, sometimes at night? You know, that's gonna be a difficult thing for a lot of different people. It's a huge sacrifice to ask for people for what I, appears to me, an unproven technology. I know there's a lot of enthusiasm for it, I know it can be a source of pride, but, and I hope I'm wrong, we had a, you know, we've been having a series of earthquakes, how is this gonna do in a 5.0 earthquake or a 5.5, you know, 5.5 earthquake? You know, we've been, we know, that's what we live with in California. And you just look at all that stuff on a ancient sand dune, I don't know how long the sand dune has been there, but probably several thousand years, how is it gonna react, you know, to that type of situation? I just can't tell, but I still have a few more minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Tournay?
Thank you. You're making me scared about living in Manhattan Beach and having our houses that are subjected to the same elements, built on the same sand dune. I will say that I, you know, am...
You got a double sand dune.
Yeah, I know, I live on the top of a sand dune, so, you know, while...
Sorry.
I, you know, while some of these concerns, I think, do need to be addressed and need to be recognized, I echo what Mayor Protem Lesser articulated, and I appreciate your perspective. I think, having grown up in Southern California for the last 45 years, I will say that I've seen the bay in days when it was really polluted, and it took efforts from multiple agencies, multiple cities, and these efforts weren't easy, they weren't easy to come by, they were costly, and they were inconvenient for residents, but I will say, we have a cleaner beach for it, and I see this project as an extension of that, and yes, there may not be other projects like it right now, but we get to be a leader in this front, we get to be the example for other cities to follow suit and continue to clean up our beaches. I know, I hope that days of, you know, post-rain, where there are alerts for people to stay out of the water because of the contaminants, because of the bacterias, like those days will hopefully one day be behind us if we implement these projects up and down the coast. So to me, while I really sympathize with the inconvenience, the construction, the parking issues, the traffic, that, especially the residents in the local areas, I, many of my friends live there, I've been listening, and it is, it's gonna be challenging, but I do think that in the long term, it will be worth it, and unfortunately, I'm sorry, that it's gonna be shouldered by most of the people who live there, and, you know, I appreciate their efforts in standing up and making sure that things are done properly, and I can say that from my perspective, that's gonna be something I hope to do on council, is to ensure and work with staff to make sure that their concerns are addressed, that whatever inconveniences we cause, that we will work with them to mitigate those concerns, and, you know, including exploring shuttle services, exploring other parking options, so for those reasons, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Shirillian?
Yes, thank you. Question and a couple of quick comments. Jeff, on this project management or the grant management, could it potentially cost less than what we've estimated if the bids come in less? And it's two parts, and if so, can we carve out some future annual costs from the grant?
So the first part of that, yes, costs could come in below what's anticipated, and keep in mind, when we anticipate spending nearly all the grant funds we have, that has a pretty heavy contingency built in there. I mean, of course, there's a lot of variability in the market right now, but, you know, we'll know in a couple months if we do move forward. In regards to additional grant funding, you're saying to help maintain it?
Yeah, I mean, if there is money left over, can we set up a fund or...
Can it go towards maintenance?
Yeah, annual maintenance.
The funds we've already been awarded, no. However, we do receive an allotment for the city each year for the Measure W local returns, and there are, we could also apply for even potentially, I'm not 100% familiar with all the details of the program, but potentially programs like Safe Clean Water Program, we would apply for funding to provide funding for the maintenance over some period of time. You know, we could put in an application for a decade worth of funding for some amount, and again, if it's not Safe Clean Water Program, there are programs out there that we'd likely be able to apply for. We wouldn't necessarily be able to just take our unused funds now...
No, I get it. Yeah, you got, you got options, though, Measure W, and you got a new grants analyst, so maybe they could find some grants as well. Yeah, and I, I too, I'm concerned, there's more comment, I'm concerned about the parking in that footprint, as I mentioned before, and we won't know until you start the project of that impact. And then, I also agree with what the mayor said earlier, that a D grade for us in Manhattan Beach is not, just not acceptable, that's all.
I have just a quick follow-up question to Councilmember Shirillian's question, I'm sorry, you keep wanting to sit down, and this is a project that warrants lots of questions, and that is the anticipated cost to maintain the system once it's complete. I thought staff had identified what that cost would be.
$150,000 per year.
$150,000 a year, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think you can sit down. But wait, there's more, no, and I do, I do truly appreciate our staff tonight, it's one of those nights when we realize just what these folks who are subject matter experts bring to all of us residents. And I appreciate that you know so much about so many things that I know so little about. But here's what I know, is that we are a beach community, and I know that, I really appreciate Councilmember Tournay bringing up how years ago, the bay wasn't always so clean, in fact, it really, really wasn't. You know, in downtown Manhattan Beach, we used to have four gas stations, Russ Lesser likes to bring this up, you know, that it's actually cleaner now than it used to be because of regulations, because of efforts that we've done, and now is really not the time to turn our back on that ocean, right? Now is the time to redouble any efforts, in my opinion. Notice I didn't say humble opinion, but in my opinion. So I really do believe that, it's funny that I said we're not a D community, and we really aren't, even for a B-plus person like myself, that's just completely unacceptable, because what it means is that people are getting sick, you know, animals are getting sick, you can't use the water and go in the water, not use water, but, and that affects our economy as well, because we do, frankly, 60% of the revenue generated in downtown Manhattan Beach comes from tourists, like it or not. So for so many reasons, it's incumbent upon us to be good stewards of that ocean. So will there be a heck of a din and roar and dirt and hassle for a year and a half or two years? Yes, yes, there will. And we do need to be empathetic to those residents, we do need to hear those residents, we need to put our best traffic engineer, Eric Zanlibit, on speed dial for those residents, sorry. Go reach Manhattan Beach, but I think that is a sacrifice that needs to be made right now for this. So I think one of our speakers said his sons understand that you have to sacrifice sometimes for the community and the greater good. So I see this as necessary, there's a funding source, yes, there will be ongoing maintenance, which will be incumbent upon the Public Works Department, Finance Department putting into the budget going forward and for us to approve it. We did approve our stormwater measure, you know, increase, which was to go to things like this, to keep our ocean clean. So I will be supporting this, so I have seconded the motion. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, there's two resolutions, so you can, the motion, the motion can include both resolutions.
I turn to the maker's motion.
You don't have to do them individually, you do not. Does the city attorney want the titles of the two motions read?
I don't need to read it, but it's 25-0029, and there's also 25-0030.
My motion is to approve both.
And I seconded that. Motion passes, four to one. Okay, thank you. And finally, item 13, consideration of a resolution setting a date and time for Proposition 218 public hearing to consider increasing commercial and residential, excuse me, solid waste hauling fees and city recovery costs for fiscal year 2026 through fiscal year 2030, and a resolution adopting procedures in connection with proposed solid waste hauling fee increases. Director Lee, once again.
Good evening again. Tonight, Public Works Department is pleased to present this Prop 218 process for our refuse rates to the council, something we've been working on for quite some time, and Solid Waste Administrator Anna-Luc Jones will be giving the presentation.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Anna-Luc Jones, I'm the Solid Waste Administrator for the Public Works Department. So I would like to start off just by addressing why this issue is important for tonight. So a Prop 218 process approves the solid waste rate increase for only five years. As you can see in the chart on the left, the first five years of our franchise agreement were covered under the Proposition 218 approval that took place in 2020. We're currently in year five of the five years. So in order to pass along any rate increases to the customer, we need to go through a Prop 218 process again, allow the community the opportunity to protest before the council can consider whether or not to approve the rates for the next five years. So that is the importance of tonight, is we are up against the end of the fifth year.
Okay.
So what is Proposition 218? In 1996, California voters passed Proposition 218, it doesn't only apply to solid waste rates, what it does is, it restricts local government from raising utility rates without allowing the property owner or rate payer an opportunity to protest the rate increase. What it involves is initiating the process, providing a written notice to all property owners and rate payers, giving them 45 days to provide a written protest, and then after the 45 days, there's a public hearing, and during that public hearing, the city clerk will announce how many protests have been received. If there is 50% plus one of the number of parcels in town, then the rates cannot move forward to the customer. So tonight's, the purpose of this report tonight is to initiate or to start that Prop 218 process. You are not making any fiscal impact decisions tonight, this is just allowing the due process to move forward, and we are proposing that that public hearing date would be May 20th. So just to break down, the state of California requires us to provide this notice to the property owner and rate payer, to give them the 45 days and to have the public hearing. What the city of Manhattan Beach does, we like to go over and above to make sure all community members understand the impacts that might happen. So we not only send the Prop 218 notice to the property owners and the rate payers, but because there's so many rentals in town, what we like to do is, if the property owner is not also the occupant, if there's a tenant in place, we send the Prop 218 notice to them as a courtesy. Maybe their rent would go up, because the rate goes up, and we want to give them the opportunity to not be blindsided as a tenant, to communicate their thoughts about the rate adjustment, or potential rate adjustment. We also publish Beach Reporter print ads all throughout this process, covering the different waves, whether it be announcing a community meeting, reminding people to look at their protest notice, file their protest notice, and of course, letting people know about the public hearing. We also will do an in-story ad with the Beach Reporter, that's, when you're online, that's the little two-inch ad that's in between each paragraph, that's called an in-story ad, and those tend to be really effective, instead of just like blasting people constantly on Facebook or Instagram. We'll also be hosting the community meeting on April 3rd if tonight moves forward, and that'll be here in the city council chambers, and that is open to anybody. And that'll be here in the City Council chambers, and that is open to anybody. We will have Zoom and we will have in-person. But if you have any questions whatsoever about the Prop 218 process, or just how that would affect your relationship with your waste management pickup, or just anything under the sun related to solid waste, we invite you to come to that. And then also, that community meeting's recording would be uploaded to a page that I would create on the city website, so that there would be one reference page for the community members to see the notice, the advertisements, and the meeting. So here's what property owners can do if it moves ahead tonight. If you want to submit a written protest, you follow the instructions on the Prop 218 notice. If you do not want to submit a written protest, if you're just fine with the rate adjustment, you don't need to do anything. There's no further action needed from you. So just to share a little bit about how a property owner or a rate payer would protest protest the rate increase, there is one protest per parcel, okay? And what you would have to do is prepare a written protest. And it might sound a little more complicated when it's in bullet points, but it's really not. You need to state, I am protesting the rates. This is my address. This is my name, and sign it. And that is it. And then there's multiple ways to deliver it. Deliver it to the City Council or to the clerk here in the council chambers during the public hearing.
Wow.
Before it ends, you can deliver it or mail it to the city clerk's office at City Hall. We also allow an electronic copy of a signed written protest. So if you're an email person and you don't have time to come down here, you can submit it via email. And then the protests received between March twenty-eighth and May twentieth will be considered and announced by the city clerk during the public hearing. So what happens if the city receives enough protests to overturn? So as I mentioned before, majority protests would be fifty percent plus one of the parcel count. We have just over thirteen thousand parcels in the city. So if we got close to six thousand five hundred protests, we would start getting a final number from the Finance Department of exactly the parcel count to make sure we can follow that closely. Just as a reference point, in 2020, we received less than forty protests. And in 2011, when we had a massive change in just programs, automating the sand section, there were so many big things that happened, we still had less than two hundred protests. So just to give you a little bit of perspective, the City Council cannot approve the customer rate increase if there's a majority protest. So what would be a couple of the options City Council would have if the protest is successful, if we receive enough of the protests? So the city would then pay the increase to Waste Management from the general fund. So Prop 218 involves the ability to pass on any, the utility rate increase to the customer. It affects the customer rate. But we would still be responsible for our obligation with the franchise agreement with Waste Management. And so we would, we as in the city, would then pay that increase from the general fund. Also, City Council has the ability to direct staff to negotiate with Waste Management if council preferred to reduce solid waste services overall, to lower the contract rate. That would be something available. And then there is no limit, Quinn can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no limit to the number of 218 processes that can be initiated. So if this one fails, the council wanted to change their mind and try it again, they could do it again.
That's correct.
Jeff is not a microbiologist. I am not an attorney, so thank you very much, Quinn. So what makes a customer rate? Typically, customer rate is what the contractor Waste Management charges and then the city recovery cost. You may be familiar in town, when you see your bill, there's something called a CRC or a City Recovery Cost. This is basically an admin charge for managing the program. It's, a CRC is applied to water, it's applied to sewer. And those are typically the two things that make up the customer rate. We have the one-time special adjustment. You may recall from the December third meeting with Waste Management for a one-time adjustment based on industry changes due to all of the happenings from COVID. So those three elements make up the customer rate for fiscal year twenty-six through thirty. Now, the next handful of slides, I'm happy to go through them quickly if you would like me to. But I just wanted to give you a really quick understanding of what that rate change would look like to a resident, because you may get asked, okay, so what is that going to mean? Like, is it going up a dollar? Is it going up a hundred dollars? Like, what is, what is the deal? And so this one lays out single-family residential carts. We've got our landfill trash, which you know determines the residential rate, depending on the cart size and quantity. There is no separate charge for recycling and organics. So for residential, hundred percent of your rate is based on the size and quantity of your gray trash cart. So in the column all the way to the right, you're going to see the difference. So for a thirty-five gallon trash cart, all-inclusive customer rate is currently seventeen seventy-six. The next column is the CPI, and then the special, one-time special increase from December, the CRC that we talked about, and then the proposed customer rate. So it's going from seventeen seventy-six to eighteen ninety-eight, which is a little over, it's about six percent change. And the difference is a dollar twenty-two.
And this was a monthly?
This is a monthly charge. And just a reminder to folks at home, your bill reflects, the residential bill reflects two months of service. So if this breakdown looks confusing to you, you just have to divide your your bill in half. And sixty-five gallon carts are most popular in the city. So those customers will be seeing a dollar fifty-nine increase starting July first if the customer rate is approved within the Prop 218 process.
Hey, Anna, quick question on that slide, if you can go back.
Yes.
So twenty and thirty-five gallon trashcans are the same price?
Yes, so one of the recommendations that came through the last RFP process was that there were residents that were recycling so amazingly that thirty-five gallon was just taking up space. And there were also sand section residents that stated that thirty-five gallon also did not accommodate their properties well. And so in the RFP, we required the haulers to provide pricing for the twenty gallon. Because it would be a niche customer, the haulers had to provide pricing for that. And it really, there was no data to reflect how many customers would select a twenty gallon. And so it was just most feasible for the proposers to make it the same price as the thirty-five. But the twenty gallon cart customer would get the benefit of the reduced size, and that would help in spatially constrained areas. Great question. The next one is multifamily cart containers. So these are multifamily locations that are from two to nine units, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. Their rate structure is different. They pay a flat rate based on the number of units they have. So they can have as many carts as they want to, but they pay a flat rate. And there's no commercial bins. And you will see the cart type. These are for two units, three units, four units. The increases is two dollars eighty-six cents, all the way to a little over five dollars. Then we get into commercial. So landfill trash will always be our most expensive service. So as a commercial business, if you're looking to reduce your refuse bill, the number one thing to do is look at what is filling up your trash and see if you could try to get some of that into the recycling and the organics. So there are carts available to some businesses, not as common, but common in the downtown. Thirty-five gallon trash cart, once a week, three dollars nineteen cents. It's going up. Getting into recycling, so in our 2020 contract that we're in right now, that started in 2020, we are charging for commercial recycling for the very first time in the city. But the price was set at fifty percent of the trash rate for the same size cart. So it's significantly cheaper to recycle. And you'll see the differences are between a dollar fifty-nine to four sixty-seven. Then we move on to trash bins. These are for your larger commercial areas. These are the green body and black lid, seventeen dollars to twenty-seven dollars for a two cubic yard to a four cubic yard, once a week.
Once a week, okay.
And then recycling bins, I didn't have a cute picture of the white bin, so just imagine those containers are white with a black lid. And you will see the increase from two cubic yard recycling, once a week, to four is thirteen dollars to twenty dollars. And this is, again, a monthly charge. So in conclusion, what we're doing tonight is recommending that City Council adopt the two resolutions. The first one is to initiate the Prop 218 process and set the public hearing for May twentieth. The second is adopting the procedures in connection. So those are the legal procedures that we have to follow through the Prop 218 process. Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it. I know it's late, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Again, another thorough report by our staff. That's why our notebook was this many pages. Okay, Councilwoman Tarnay?
I just have a quick question. Can you explain what the difference is, what accounts for the difference in the special increase, that one-time special increase between the residential and the multifamily and commercial ones? I think for a single family, it's two point five one percent special increase. And then for the?
For the commercial, it goes to five point four percent.
Right.
Sure, so when Waste Management provided their proposal on the one-time special increase that they needed, they acclimated the impact based on the labor and operations of their business. And the commercial sector requires a greater portion of their labor and operations. And so the one-time increase was lower for the residential sector because it's a much simpler operation, and the commercial sector had a higher portion.
Thank you. Other questions at this time? All right, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there are any members of the public here in chambers who are not with Waste Management and would like to speak. Okay, seeing none, closing that, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Oh, wait, we lost her. I'm just gonna, oh.
Oh. Each term.
There's, there's been a motion to, well, there's two, there's two resolutions on here, right? So I'm going to ask Councilmember Franklin what he intends.
Yeah, both with one vote?
Yeah, both with one vote.
And that's been seconded by Councilmember Sherrillian. And I do want to say, I mean, this is bringing it to the people and allowing them to discuss that we are not making this decision. So I, of course, want to bring this forward. Councilmember Losser?
I just simply would observe, I initially opposed the proposed increase, the special increase by Waste Management. They originally proposed a much higher amount. I didn't believe that was what the contract provided. Through discussion with council, with a commitment to giving certain value back for a portion of that fee, the fee has come down. In the spirit of collaboration with our long-term partner, I will be supporting this tonight.
All right, great. I'd like to call for the question. Thank you to all who stayed throughout the full meeting.
Motion passes, final.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, L, City Council requests and reports, including AB 1234 reports. Are there any AB 1234 reports? Councilmember Sherrillian?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the National League Cities Conference in Washington last week. And it was their hundred-year century of strengthening cities.
Cool.
From nineteen twenty-four to twenty twenty-four. But great conference, got a chance to meet and collaborate with individuals from towns and cities across the country, as well as attend forums on smarter cities, public policies, public safety, transportation. But the real fun highlight was going on Capitol Hill and got a chance to reconnect with Congressman Ted Lieu. Spent some time with him in his office and asked him some, some questions. Just reconnected with him, I've known him since his days in Torrance.
Yeah.
So we go way back. And that, in that regard, we haven't stayed in touch over the years. But it was real beneficial and put some wind in the sails for me.
That's so great. I love that you dove right in. Were there any, I know you'll probably leave the agenda or something with the city clerk.
Already done.
Were there any books or reading materials that they suggested?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
No, they.
Yeah, I love that stuff, so I'll take a look at that. Thank you for sharing. Any other AB 1234 reports? Okay, future agenda items. Councilwoman Tarnay?
I'd like to request two, please. One would be, you know, in light of all the challenges of parking that we're going to see around town, I'd really like for city staff to explore the usage of a shuttle around town, similar to what we had at one point with the Downtowner. And I think, you know, in anticipation of also World Cup and the Olympics, it would be great to get that rolling so that we can see how that looks like prior to.
I would support bringing it forward. So you know how this works, right? Like, it's like, it's not, yeah, it's funky. So you get two votes, and so then staff will come back and say, this is a big thing to discuss. It's going to take a lot of time and money, or whatever. And then you get three votes, and then they come forward with a full staff report. Okay, so when they come, the next time, it's not going to be the full plethora. But like, when they come forward, somebody may say, okay, now study this and come back, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Got it.
You said you had a second one?
So the second one was, was exploring ways we can help the Marine Mammal Care Center. And I don't know if we've had service agreements in the past in exploring those options.
So exploring, yeah, I would support that. Bring it forward. Okay, Councilmember Franklin, I have one, too.
Yes, in a recent, fairly recent council meeting, we, budget review, we saw that our electricity costs have gone up three hundred thousand dollars. So in talking to the city manager, they're examining, there's over a hundred accounts that we have. I just want to have a review of that. It also came to light that the, that the school district changed their level of the clean energy from one hundred to twenty-five percent and saved forty-three thousand dollars. So I just want to take a look and examine those numbers and perhaps see what comes up and make a decision.
So it sounds like there's two things there? Or like, do you want to do a, what do you call it? A review, an audit of our electric accounts? You said there's a hundred accounts?
Yeah, do an audit, well, do a, a study if we, if we make changes to the level, I believe.
Well, that's a different thing. There's two things. Well, it is, go ahead, keep going.
Okay, is to do a study and see, you know, how much we're paying, and then what would be the effect of not, not switching over completely to Southern California Edison, but by lowering the option. Everybody was opted in, including, I believe, us at the a hundred percent.
We voted, we voted to opt ourselves in.
Okay, so we voted.
Two different times.
Okay, but the residents didn't have that vote. They were opted in automatically to a hundred percent. And so I just want to see if we voted to lower it to twenty-five, to fifty percent or twenty-five percent, what would be the financial implications? So that's the study I'd like to see.
Also going to.
Okay, that'll come back. I'm not, I'm still not, so, all right, just, just for clarification, you're asking city staff to come back and say, if we weren't, if we were at lean power or, you know, clean power, it would be X amount, and it would be X amount. power, it would be X amount, and it would be X amount." You just want to know the numbers.
Right, yeah. And then we could make a decision about switching, if it's any significant number.
So, we're just coming back.
Well, let that come back, and then we can go ahead and make another motion, another agenda.
Okay. All right.
Another future agenda.
That has a future agenda item. So I would like to bring back, a while ago, before we kind of got to some different discussions about trash enclosures, and I know we're going to be talking more about trash enclosures, prior council came, gave staff direction to require Mr. Zisslis to put down a, kind of a deposit dependent on improving or depend, depending on what, the work that he was being required to do. And I would like to review that, given that we've changed what those requirements could be.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Try that before.
All right, any, anything else? All right, city manager report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
City Attorney?
No report tonight.
Okay, so I am going to adjourn this meeting to a closed session on Monday, March 31st, 2025, at 4:30 PM, right here in City Council chambers. We are adjourned.